Okay, welcome to the special committee, uh, council committee of the whole meeting. It is Saturday, January twenty fifth at nine ten P M. Addie, would you call the roll?
A M. A M. You said P M.
A M.
A M. Uh, Kudo.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
You.
Oh, you. Uh, Russell. Maddox.
Okay, Councilwoman Russell and Councilman Maddox are not able to attend today. Before we get started, I s- I, I want to acknowledge, uh, I'm sure everybody knows there was a fire last night at the Marquee at Cedar and Lee, uh, the Cedar Lee Metal Brook, um, complex and, um, new apartments. We certainly want to thank the firefighters, uh, Chief Harry, uh, all the firefighters that came from the surrounding area to, uh, assist. It was, uh, quite a blaze. It's, parts of it are actually still going. Uh, this certainly was devastating for, uh, uh, our city and, uh, you know, the mayor has been keeping us updated. We got, the last update we got was, uh, four, four some, four fifteen in the morning. I, I happened to be at Cozumel, uh, when the fire trucks went by, but didn't know that the fire was basically right across the street. And, you know, just to say, uh, what can you say? I mean, these guys are out there at seventeen degrees and they're out there for, you know, over the whole night. So, thank you to them. Anybody else wanna say anything? Okay.
I think you've done a nice job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put everything in.
So, uh, we're here today to, uh, work on the Charter Review Commission's recommendations. And we do have two members of the Charter Review Commission here, Linda Strioski and E. Elian. I don't know if I ever say.
It's Thellian. I say Stell- Thellian.
Thellian.
Thank you.
Well, I used to say Guy. I probably had the both names wrong. At least I got one. One part of it. And, uh, they were two members of the Charter Review Commission. So, just to kind of frame where we're at, we've had a few meetings already. We were shooting to get this done, uh, by the, uh, our, our part of it, the review part of it done. And then we're gonna turn it over to the Law Department. And the objective is to get it on the ballot this November. You know, we're probably like two years into this process now, but, you know, from the time we started to look at forming a Charter Review Commission to now, and certainly we wanna, you know, conclude with, um, this body of work. We're working on, uh, right now, the first thing we're gonna work on is the balance of power between the two branches of government, executive and the legislative branch. And, um, what we're looking to do, well, I, I, I think I'll speak for myself on this part. I, I would say that, that, you know, to have checks and balances, you have to have that balance of power that, oh, that gives council the tools, uh, to enforce the spirit of the charter. I- in my view, in some places, i- in some cases, it's either not clear or, or perhaps we don't have it. And, um, we do have, um, legislative authority. We review legislation, sometimes we modify legislation, sometimes we create legislation. We have budget authority, which is a little more detailed than our legislative authority. And the idea of having co-equal branches of government is to have go, uh, two branches of government, uh, in this case, uh, fully empowered to do their job. It doesn't mean they're equal in every other way, but it, the, the equal comes that, that we just do, are able to do the job because we are empowered by the tenants of the charter. And that's where council gets its authority. And the legitimacy comes from the process we're doing right now. You have a Charter Review Commission that looks at the, at the charter. You have a city council that goes over those recommendations. Then we give it to the Law Department eventually, it goes on the ballot and the people vote. And, and that's where the legitimacy comes with an agreement that these are the best, um, tenants of our charter. So that's what we're doing here today. What I'm suggesting, what I'd like to suggest, and we can go around the room first if you'd like, is I think we should probably go over what we've done so far because, uh, at least for the first half hour or so, to make sure that we're on the same page. And there were a few items that we left off. When's the last time, Addie, that we met? Was it?
October twenty ninth.
Okay. So it's been almost three months. So, I think it'll serve two purposes. One, we'll kind of refresh ourselves as to where we're at. I know everybody looked this over, but also, we did leave a few things to be determined that we went over. So, um, so we'll start with, um.
President Kudo.
Yes.
As we go through this, um, Addie's taken these terrific notes. So how does that merge into adjusting and rewording and changing things on the notes based on what council has recommended? Do we wait to do that merge and tell we're all done with the document?
I mean, we can use, we can go over this as we're reviewing her notes and, you know, the red line charter. That's, that's what I have out. Yeah, absolutely, cuz, you know, we don't, we don't wanna reinvent anything, but we do wanna accurately portray where we're at. So, um, in Article One, I think, let me see, I just wanna make sure. Yeah, I think Article One, we were good, right?
Correct, I don't have any notes on that one.
Okay. So then.
Article One, I did not have any notes on.
Then Article Two. Article Two had powers, terms, qualifications, vacancies. I think, uh, we changed from forty-five days to sixty days for vacancies on council. Did we agree on that?
Where is that?
That's a question. Vacancies, uh.
Oh, or in Article Three, no, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sixty days.
Oh, I'm sorry. Qualifications, uh, switched it to one year, from six months to one year. Salaries and, I think the next thing was salaries and compensation. Just stop me when you're like, you need to go over something. Appointments.
Hold on here, I'm getting confused. So, I was following Addie's notes and which section are you in?
Uh, three point five.
Put your hand down on page seven to twenty-nine. Is that correct?
Um, on the handout?
Addie's handout.
In the, this, the packet that I gave, yeah, it should.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually not. I'm looking through the red line.
Yeah, so it should be page three of the red line. Copy, which is in the packet.
I mean, I, I do have Addie's notes on too.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I get it.
And then there's general pro- provisions. Uh, I think we, we wanted to revisit council's subpoena power, correct?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah, I think there was some discussion and debate about that.
I think we all agreed that the oath should come from the Law Director. I think, I don't know why that's.
Mister President, I don't recall whether we had some consensus on whether council law to have subpoena power.
Um, all I have are questions. So I don't think you had consensus.
I raised some concerns about.
Well, here's where we're at. We do have subpoena power according to the Ohio Revised Code. The question is, and, and we might wanna refer to the Charter Review Commission if we need to, but the question is, do we wanna put it in the charter? Because it is, uh, and I'll refer to the Law Director as well. Counselors have subpoena power according to the Ohio Revised Code. Director Hannah?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
I think the issue, at least from what my notes are, was more on the fact, uh, on the issue of penalty for failing to submit to a subpoena.
Yeah, that is very cold.
So, I actually have a question on this.
Sure.
So, it, you know, okay, so I'm on three point eight, council subpoena power. You know, the council shall have the power to make investigations, dot, dot, dot. So does that say the majority of council has? I mean, how, how does that, how would that look if, uh, a council were to implement that?
I think from a sort of fundamental standpoint, an individual council person wouldn't have any authority unless there were some, which would be extraordinary, I think, provision that conferred that upon them in the charter. Cuz council acts through its legislative enactments or motions in some cases. Um, so that requires at a minimum, a majority of, of the council to make a determination or to approve an action.
So does this mean we would have to legislate something?
Yeah.
Or we could, uh, deploy this subpoena power?
So we can, um, I think this gets a little bit into the April issue. We can provide additional details around some of those questions. I'm not prepared to address that exhaustively today, but you would need either legislation, which could be a resolution rather than an ordinance, um, because it's really a transactional sort of, um, standard or, or act, excuse me, um, or potentially a motion. You wouldn't need legislation to effectuate a grant of authority that, that is conferred by charter unless the charter said further legislation would be required or authorized you to adopt legislation to do something. But that's not what this purports to do.
But in any case, it's gonna require a majority vote?
Yes.
Is that how other similar cities operate?
It would have to be. I mean, a council can only act through voting.
And, and that's already codified in one eleven.
I'm just trying to think of the least clunky way of doing it. I mean, I know that you'd have to have a majority of council coming up agreement, so yeah, you, you would get some kind of vote, but, I mean, are we dealing with, I mean, if it's just a quick motion, I think we're okay. But I, I wouldn't want it to be lengthy and complicated and clunky if, if, if council was just trying to get an answer for something.
So again, we, we, we can put together additional details about that, um, and look at how it's been handled in other communities, but, it may be that you don't want this to be something that can be done in the snap of a finger. On the other hand, you don't want it to delay council if there's an important, you know, issue that council needs to pursue. But, yeah, in any event, there's no mechanism in Ohio law that would allow, you probably don't want each individual council person able to issue subpoenas on their own.
I would agree with that.
And so, I think it's a question of the instrument or the method, legislation or motion. And again, I can do some, I'll think into what that, how that's handled elsewhere.
The way I would, the way I think about it is council is a check and balance on executive authority. We all, I think we all agree with that. Overs- oversight, having the power of oversight or the authority to do oversight would require, in some cases, could possibly require, um, subpoena power if, if you believe that's a proper function legislative, um, of the legislative branch. And then, I would further say, if we want the charter to reflect our values, is it worth to, to restate something that's in the Ohio Revised Code in the charter for the purpose of saying yes? It's kind of an affirmation more than it is, I mean, I get, I guess. And Linda, do you wanna speak to this at all? Because I know you guys had a, um, kind of robust discussion about it.
No, we talked about it. We talked about it. I mean, the, the whole idea of having, uh, city council subpoena power in the charter was suggested by the mayor. And we learned that it was already in the Ohio Revised Code. So, you know, we put it in the draft, you know, but if it is in fact in the Ohio Revised Code, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the charter. That's really up to you. You could simply rely on the power that you have under the Ohio Revised Code and some of these other things that are already in place. So, you know, you don't need to struggle over this if you don't want to. You know, my personally, you know, of all the things that we put in the charter, this, this is that like on my top thirty-five list in terms of what's important to put in the charter, but it's, it's up to you guys. That's just speaking for me, that's not for the, not for the CRC, of course, cuz the CRC is no longer in existence.
I, I think what, I think what Counselor Posh is looking for is some reflection of transparency, which if we had to do legislation, that would give that opportunity. So I don't know if that needs to be in the pension tier or if it can be, we can just refer to that O R C.
Yeah, and again.
Or you can do that simply without being bulky.
Well, so it, it would, you would need it to be transparent because you can only act in that fashion. So that would be an open public meeting, but, um, again, I can take a look and see if I can find examples of language. And I don't know if the Charter Review Commission did this of other communities or just, you know, explore how other communities handle that. I would agree with the former chair, the former CRC, that, um, that thi- this is law that exists elsewhere and that, you know, you can put together some additional details, make decisions about this, but that it probably isn't something that you get stuck on at the moment.
Well, if, go ahead.
Yeah, quick question, Bill. I'm trying to find in the code.
I don't have that site in front of me.
Okay, and I'm looking, I, I find one provision that does authorize the legislative authority to issue subpoenas and compulsory process. It's in seven thirty, three point thirty-eight, but it's specifically limited to charges brought against city employees for misconduct.
So I think that's actually in the commission's report.
And as I'm reading this.
I don't think it's so limited, uh, overall, but again, I don't.
So we didn't cite to the specific O R C section, um, and I might have it someplace in my notes, but we probably know someplace.
Yeah, our, our section is drafted, this is much broader than that.
So again, if you'd like some analysis of this, that I'm not in a position to do today, um, we're happy to take that up.
Yeah, I mean, my, my personal feeling is that, um, I would like something, if, since we have this power, that's, that's not disputable in the Ohio Revised Code. I would like something tailored, I would like something in the charter that is tailored to, um, you know, tailored from the O R C that's, it's a little more specific. So we have guidance from the charter as opposed to something in the Ohio Revised Code that may give us that power, but is a little bit vague about what you're talking about, Jim, which is the implementation of it. So, are we okay with that? Councilman Petrus, you can shine it anytime.
No particular thoughts. Thank you, Bill, for asking.
Sure. So, so is that okay with everybody in the char- we put it in the charter and let, uh, Director Hannah, uh, tailor something for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Out until I see what Bill comes up with, uh, refraining, I guess, any further comment or decision on this.
Yeah. Let's see, emergency measures. Actually, my notes on this are that Craig, you were gonna review this. I don't know when I wrote, I didn't put a date on this, but.
This one would have been nine twenty-five.
Not the funny part. Yeah. And.
I'm trying to rec- what, what the, uh, controversy was. Revisit language referencing the Ohio Revised Code. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I had a note on my notes about this, about a super majority or not.
You know, Ohio law generally requires a two-thirds majority and your current charter provisions require a two-thirds majority. I think, my, my impression would be that based upon the discussions that typically are associated with this topic, there would be controversy in trying to allow a simple majority to make the determination that it takes effect immediately when it otherwise might not.
This essentially tracks what the Ohio Supreme Court has said you need to say in your legislation to make it an emergency ordinance. I, gosh, I don't, I don't recall revisiting, referencing the Ohio Revised Code and Supreme Court decisions. I know there's been some controversy over our passing legislation that we want to take effect immediately because it does have the language that it's an emergency. Piece of legislation would be really not per se an emergency.
Well, and I think that's the crux of, if I might, I think that's the crux of the issue. There's two things. In addition to taking immediate effect, um, an emergency measure properly adopted is not subject to referendum. So, there are times when people, um, feel that it's not appropriate to overcome that otherwise, you know, available mechanism for challenging legislation, um, adopted by the council. The other piece is the meaning of the word emergency, which doesn't mean, uh, you know, a last night's fire type of emergency. There are other provisions that allow council to act on an emergency basis when those actions are necessary. This, um, requires that there's an articulation, I mean, in general, requires that there's an articulation of the reason that it needs to take effect immediately. And if the reason is contained in and isn't sort of facially and obviously unreasonable or untrue, it's contained in legislation, of course, it's gonna give discretion to the legislative authorities' determination about that. But that's, I think, the two, the, the referendum question comes up less frequently, more frequently. You hear, you do everything on emergency, um, and council's here. You do everything on emergency and also, this isn't really an emergency. But, again, there's a, it's a, it can be even administrative emergency, the need to accept grant funds, the need to do certain things in certain times, or council's determination that there's no reason for something to take longer because typically, you have a two reading rule here, which is different than general state law. Usually it's three readings on three separate days and then thirty days to take effect. So you kind of get caught in between that situation where people are saying, you're rushing this. And then, if you aren't rushing it in some sense, um, people on the other hand may say, residents may say, observers may say, good lord, why can't you function like the private sector and get anything done? And there's, you know, several months built in there if you just take all the steps in their normal stepwise fashion, particularly with three readings and thirty days.
If, I, I think this proposed amendment simply, um, puts in the charter what's already required by the Ohio Supreme Court.
I think that, I think that's generally true. I, the note that I had was to revisit regarding scope and language with respect to the, um, the manner in which the rationale was explained. But it's not April yet and so we haven't revisited that.
Well, I mean, if we leave this in as an amendment, then are we hypothetically looking at having to have five members vote for all of those pieces of legislation that are declared an emergency?
You already do. So, yes, you are, you are looking at that. Um, and hypothetically, if this were in place, you would have to do that. And in reality, you already have to do that.
Okay, so.
This is in the charter, so we're covered already.
It's, but it's not broke, that's true.
It's in a different place in the charter.
It's not broken out clearly.
Really new. It's just moved. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
And I, and I do think that breaking it out clearly with its own, um, section like this is, is a, is advisable.
Sure.
Everybody okay with that then? Five, five votes? And I think it says two-thirds cuz like if there are six people on council and it does have occasion, then you'd be four votes out of six. It's, it's just a possibility to think about. So that would be the exception to five votes.
Of course, in that case, two-thirds is also the first majority.
Right, yeah. I'm looking at president of council and vice president of council and I see we changed a couple of things here that I'm fine with. Any comments on that? And so it ended up being like a majority of members present.
Well, I mean, this came up this week regarding to what extent council leadership has the ability to speak on behalf of city council. Is that something that we wanna look at in terms of additional language in the charter or leave it best to a, an ordinance or resolution?
I, I'm looking at Bill because, um.
I think you could do either, um, so long as there is nothing in the charter that said, you know, these shall be the only powers of the president or vice president of council. Advisability, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but as we discussed the other night in the committee of the whole meeting, currently there is no language in either the charter or the ordinances that says the president is the spokesperson of the city council. And, and, and in some respects, there's a fundamental question there, which is that a council speaks through its legislation because of that issue of speaking by action of the majority of the board or the, the group. But I think that there are ways that you could provide for some authority for the president. It's just not currently done.
You know, the, the only reason, so when this came up, as far as applying this, what you're talking about, we were talking about hiring a communications person. Then the issue becomes, do we have to vote every time we wanna communicate with the public? And that could be tricky if we're trying to, you know, keep up with the communications. Like, I, I mean, I don't wanna get into like a long discussion about what I tried to do, but, you know, I tried to put something in the newsletter. I'm just saying, if we, if we decide that we do want to have, I mean, I think we do wanna communicate with the public, but if we wanna decide how we wanna communicate with the public and if we wanna have a consultant and really whether we do or not, um, you know, if we were to use city resources to do it, how would that happen? And I, you know, it's not that I want, or that I think a council president should have more powers. I'm just trying to figure out, how could this be done effectively without designating council leadership or somebody as the spokesperson?
Let's kind of look at a real rules example here. There's a list of things that we need in order to pass the budget. And there's been a bit of a conflict between the two sides of government on whether that list is complete, sort of in process and where it is. Or, yeah, we. or yeah, we've given everything. Now, speaking from the council position, you know, my, my personal position on this is we need a place on our website that has that item. I mean, that basically are seventeen items, maybe now eighteen, which items, and you've consolidated some, so maybe that number is different. Let's go with this, let's go with the list of seventeen things that are partially complete. Who controls that on the website? I mean, who updates the list? Who has the authority to put that out there? I mean, theoretically, we shouldn't have to vote every time we want to make sure that we've got every word, every, every piece in there. I mean, I mean, I will tell you, we have a member of this council, so we've satisfied all the requests. And I don't, and, and, and that's not true. But just, I mean, where, you know, I think from a, I used the word clunky a couple of times, but I mean, I think it's real clunky if we have to vote for it when we've already voted for our president who, and I'm gonna say, you know, speaks for us, yeah. I mean, you go to these meetings with the mayor and you do speak for council, okay? You, and, I mean, if, if, if something is, if, if something needs to be done or if an individual council member has spoken to you about something, you're our primary conduit with, with, with the administration. I mean, with weekly meetings.
There's no question that the mayor has the authority to have a communications department and put out communications that speak for the city. The question is, do we and should, should we and how could we? And is it appropriate or is it something we want to be able to have council to speak? Because I, you know, look, we, I mean, just to be frank about it, the mayor has made communications that, where he's said, this is what council says and da, 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 da. And, you know, I, I know that some of us have disagreed with that. The question is, should we have a vehicle? And if we do have a vehicle, how would we use it? And I, I mean, I, I, I think that councils, I think each branch of government should be able to speak for itself. I mean, you can't, you know, and, you know, obviously the mayor could, you know, in the case of just us speaking out and let's just say it was the council president speaking on behalf of council. If any council member wanted to refute that or any, or the mayor wanted to refute it, that, you know, that's fine. But I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that council doesn't have a voice. And by that, I mean, we, you know, should have the ability to use the resources to reach the residents just like the mayor does.
So let's say that there's a fire on Lee Road and something has to, there has to be some interface between a council, between council and the press. Maybe a bad example, because that, that's the kind of example that would go typically through the mayor and the communications department.
I think there's no way the council should speak on anything like that. It's only on legislative, I, I, you know, I think.
Well, it was a bad example, so I started off.
No, no, I know, but I'm, I just wanted to be specific about it. I, I think it's only on legislative matters.
Yeah, so I'm changing my example. It's, it's, it's something that went through legislation or it's something that we're, we're trying to do as, as a, as a body, because we've all agreed to it. And, you know, someone is gonna speak to the press about it or put something out on Facebook about it or, or some, just some, some communication. I mean, I know that there's been issues where bodies have tried to come up with a statement, okay? And a subset of council have come up with a statement and given that, and that has broken the sunshine rules. It's a whole lot easier, less clunky if we have our council leadership do that. So I would propose if there's some, I mean, not, I mean, so we're all okay with, with the sunshine rules and a piece of communication has to go out or someone has to go on, on the council website. It seems to me that the council leadership that this council has voted on to be its leaders has that authority.
Well, my question for Director Hannah would be, do we need to do this in the charter or is this something?
You, you don't. As I said earlier, unless there's something in the charter that would prohibit you from acting by ordinance, you wouldn't need to put it in the charter. But you could, in this case, with regard to president and vice president, include some recognition of such other authority as may be determined by ordinance of council or something like that, which allows you to, which very clearly authorizes you to take action in chapter one eleven to flesh out those duties and authorities as you think is appropriate.
I would like that. I know that's a knee jerk thing, but I would like that provision in there.
Makes sense.
Jim Petrus.
Thank you. I think that this needs to be clarified and I agree with Councilman Posh's perspective. I have no strong position though, whether it's in the charter or in the ordinances. And if the council is not satisfied with the statement, for example, that a council president puts together, it could always remove the council president with someone else.
And that, that is in the charter. So, yeah, I would say that, go ahead.
I, I, I like his suggestion about just as other powers, you know, is authorized. And then as part of this review of chapter one eleven, which you've asked me to do, why don't we address that with an ordinance? Giving the council president authority, which, I mean, sort of by practice, anyway, the council president has gone beyond merely simply calling meetings and setting agenda. You have been the fourth, not just you, but whoever the council president has been, has essentially assumed the role of speaking on behalf of all of council.
I, I would just add that, that all makes sense. But keep in mind, when you get to wrestling with this with chapter one eleven, also that, you know, again, that, that saying that council speaks through legislation, there's lots of reasons that that's, that that's generally true. And so some communities have rules that say that a council member who's expressing disagreement or some position that's different than what council has already voted on, you know, somebody voted against something, but they lost on that vote, they can't go out and then try to articulate a different position as some sort of official position of council because council has already acted and spoken through that document. All of which is to say only that it, it's worth spending some time with and being careful with in chapter one eleven, and of course you would be.
Okay, I'm ready to move to the next item. Thank you for that. I'm glad we agree. And I think just adding that little tagline, Director Hannah of, you know, or as described by ordinance, covers, you know, puts clarity to that. All right, let's spend a little time on three point one two, council interactions with the city administration. So I'm gonna read this. Council and the mayor shall collaborate in good faith for the best interests of the city to ensure both the administration of the government be conducted without unreasonable impediment and that members of council be permitted to exchange information with and receive information from city administrative officers and employees in order to support council's legislative and constituent services functions. When appropriate, members of council may serve the residents of the city as advocates through whom residents can seek the services of the city and any redress of grievances. And I'm looking at Addie's notes now. So narrow the term personnel to avoid conflicts with article four.
Right, so instead of clarify who can be requested to attend, so limiting to directors or designate as opposed to just saying employee.
Yeah.
Or including employee.
Employee seems a little bit broad because it's four hundred and thirty people now. We really want, I mean, should, I think the first question is, should we have authority to bring in any employee? You know, and, and I think, I don't know.
I don't, I don't believe so. And you could, you could put an employee in a very difficult position.
I mean, because then if somebody says something about somebody and what, we're gonna bring them in, it's almost like subpoena power again for, you know, I mean, like to the, to a kind of ridiculous degree. So we can certainly, you know, I think take that up. I would, I would like it to be, to include chiefs as well as administrators. Is that something you could live with? I, I can't believe you.
I, I kind of, you know, there's a lot of wiggle room here. I, I think it should be all employees. I mean, you're not gonna, by practice, you're, you're not going to. You're not gonna create uncomfortable situations for employees. I mean, we're all talking about collaborating, okay? This is, we're all collaborating together, okay?
Well, I want you to separate out the aspirational stuff from the, you know, the practical. I mean, we, we, I mean, this is, this is nice because it, it conveys what we want to be. And, and this gets back to Georgine Wheelo's testimony on this. I think, I think that's a good part of this. But, but now we're talking about the implementation part.
It, it encourages good behavior. You know, we've, we've all heard, okay, so we all have relationships with people that work in this building, okay? And, you know, we, we have heard some great behaviors that has happened over time. We've heard of bad behaviors that have happened, okay? This is even on the school district, okay, with social school district employees. I just, and, and in the spirit of just having positive oversight, being able to, if a majority of council wishes to talk to any employee about anything, we should have that right. I mean, you, you don't want to abuse it, okay? Just like you don't want someone to abuse what's coming out of our communications department. I mean, so, but this is a check and balance and it's, and, and I think it sets an expectation that, you know, people need behaving. We need to see good behavior because someone's good, because someone may ask you about your behavior.
So this is in a liquid ordinance that's stood for sixty years. But I want to go to Director Hannah and ask, could this conflict with mayoral authority on staff, over staff?
I think it, I think it does conflict. To the extent that it's in the charter, that conflict would need to be required by trying to make those two provisions work together. And so you would essentially conclude that this isn't, you know, oversight or giving orders because the charter says it, you can do it. And there could be a counterpart amendment to article three, section six, that says that except as otherwise provided in this charter, you know, council shall not yada, yada. Instead of just except for purposes of inquiry, but actually the orders is in a slightly different clause. But I do think this is worth taking some, taking care with and taking some time to work through because you could envision a situation in which because some, because council or multiple members of council have a relationship with somebody in a department, they start requiring that person to attend meetings and they start relying upon the information or statements that that person might, that employee might make in lieu of allowing the normal hierarchical structure of employee, director, administrator, mayor, and the control of the administrative staff to function as it's supposed to. So I think if you limit it to directors or chiefs, it's, it's easier to work within that existing framework. And if you specifically allow it to be different than that, I think you run the risk of creating unstable situations in the future.
So this is the way I look, I'm looking at it right now. We, the reason why we have and should have a very defined authority to get information from directors is because of our legislative powers. You know, if legislation is created at the director level and brought to us, you know, we should be able to ask them questions, get timely answers, and we're gonna get to this in a minute, have, require their attendance. And, and in, within that attendance, require interaction, not just that they sit there, but that there's interaction required. When you get into employees, to me, that's covered in the subpoena power that we have. You know, that's when something goes wrong and we need to do some oversight. I don't think for the purposes of inquiry, which is I think what we're talking about here, that inquiring, if it's not, if it's for information for legislation, which is what I think this is for, I don't, I don't see why we would be going below a, a, a director or their designate, like if a director couldn't make it and they sent the assistant director. I mean, that, that's cool. Go ahead, Kayla.
I'm happy with or designate. And I'm looking at the way that it's been working for trying, when we do invite directors to our meetings, that if there might be a particular sub department head, I might put them in the same line as the director, you know, on the email. But I'm comfortable with the way it's working. And when we, you, would you really need to specify chiefs when you have the word official? Because isn't that what a chief is?
Let's direct that to the director.
I don't have any objection to making it more specific if that's useful. And my notes from previously include the words directors, chiefs and designees.
There you go.
So I think this is, I think that this is similar to the place that council ended up.
Yeah, I could go along with that.
And would it include the city administrator in that language? I mean.
So again, there's city administrator is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think that the, I think that the notes that I just mentioned had to do more with sort of fleshing out the meaning of city administrative officers. And this is another situation in which you've got specific provisions that address the administrator's authorities and duties. And so anything that you do elsewhere in the charter, you just want to make sure that they complement each other appropriately, so that it all works.
Jim Posh, are you?
I'm okay with that. I mean, I think we need to have a more look at this, so I'm kind of curious to see what's gonna come.
Are, are you okay with the distinction I made between subpoena power and the purpose thing? Okay, because I just, I'm, you know, I'd like everybody to be comfortable, but at the end of the day, we're gonna kind of have to go with what the majority wants to turn over to the law department. So the second part of this is the mayor, city administrator and city administrator officers and employees shall respond to the inquiries from council members in a timely manner. Without limiting the preceding sentence, the council president or a council committee chair may request a person attend specified meetings of council or of such committee respectively, when the council president or committee chair has made a request, the official director or personnel requested to be in attendance, well, we probably need to tighten that up.
Right, that's.
Shall attend the meeting and answer questions asked by a member of council. You know.
The two, the two things I had highlighted and that was kind of going back to the first paragraph was the request a person and or personnel. So I just think if you're gonna do language like mayor, city administrator, administrative officer, each of these needs, it should be.
Just give, give this to Jim. And Kayla. So Beechwood has this in their charter, but it's really short. The requirement that directors and city employees attend all council meetings when requested to attend by council and participate in all discussions relating to their respective departments. And then you'll see in the county charter, you see ten in parentheses to require as necessary the attendance of any county employee, you know, so they got the big broad one. But I just want you to see two charters entries, you know. I think it lead, needs to be a little bit, I mean, I don't know how you look at this, Director Hannah, but. I think it lead, needs to be a little bit, I mean, I don't know how you look at this, Director Hannah, but, um, the Beachwood one seems a little bit vague and it doesn't have a requirement to notify the mayor, which I think, you know, we don't wanna conflict with that, you know. We've been asked by the mayor and I, I don't know if it's codified, a request that can be backed up by code, but that, you know, any of our interactions with department heads include him CC'd on it. Uh, so, you know, I don't wanna have something that conflicts with that.
That makes, that makes sense. I think, I didn't pull it up here, but this essentially is a, it's a item H, as you pointed out here, and it's within a list of things that council can by ordinance require, I believe. Or can establish, so council can establish the requirement that directors and city employees attend all council meetings when requested. I think it's up to council whether participate in all discussions is, you know, is substantively different than the language that's currently present or whether it meets your needs. It suggests a two-way, uh, you know, conversation. And the mayoral thing, uh, mayoral notice issue, I should say, um, I think that's fine to keep it in. You would expect that, that a mayor would be aware of this, that the employee would make him aware or the president of the council, but, but I don't know that there's a problem in requiring it.
Well, if we don't require it and then somebody doesn't do it.
Doesn't happen, yeah.
Then we, now we're in a, now we have conflict, right? Cause I think most mayors, I don't know what most mayors would do, but I, I think some mayors, if not most mayors, wanna know what's going on.
Okay, so I don't think we should, should be required to copy the mayor on anything. But I mean, but I think from a practical perspective, we should. It's out of respect.
So you don't think it should be codified?
I don't wanna, I don't think it, I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be in any kind of document. The, if the mayor has a director and we've reached out to a director, I mean, that director works for the mayor and that director might have a requirement, an employee, employment requirement from the mayor to copy the mayor if, if council has asked something. Okay, so if we've asked, you know, a planning director to do X, Y and Z or just asked a question, it shouldn't be on us to try to have to copy everybody that is on it in, in this charter. I mean, we should be able to reach out to the department and then how all this stuff sort of works inside this building. And maybe the mayor, if he wants to know what's going on, um, then at that point, and the, the director would know this, would copy the mayor and said, by the way, Councilman Posh contacted me about X, Y and Z. We also have the.
The mayor could, here's, here's another thing. The mayor could require all of his employees to let them know when council, you know, like, so we don't, let's just say we don't copy him. He could require the employee to do it anyway. But my question is, if we don't put this in and the mayor says, I wanna be copied when you make the request, I want council members, is there going to be a conflict? If it's not.
No, if it's, if it's, that's sort of like a negative, um, interaction, meaning that there's a, an absence of a requirement here doesn't mean that it couldn't be imposed elsewhere because the mayor otherwise has the authority to establish how employees do their jobs. I'm also not, it's for council to determine, but you could imagine scenarios in which a, a director forgets or is, you know, that there's something happening with a director and the mayor and I, I would just say consider carefully whether there are problems with requiring that the mayor's notified. Um, and then before I forget, so the Beachwood provision article section, Article three, Section five says, this is under council duties, council shall by ordinance resolution or when appropriate by motion make provisions for. And then you get to the requirement that directors and city employees attend all council meetings.
Yeah, as requested, like, and, and I wanna make it clear, I don't want, I've been speaking obviously for myself. I don't want directors or staff to have to come to meetings if we don't want them there. Like in other words, I don't think we should be able to compel their attendance, or their attendance shouldn't be automatic. You know, there are people that think it should, so if anybody wants to debate that, I mean, I'm willing to listen.
I think the way you've got the agenda for council meeting set up right now works. If there's something that the administration wants us to know, they will tell that particular director to come to the council meeting and share it with us. And I, I would like to see that we do not specify that the mayor needs to be copied simply because the next mayor may decide that I want the city administrator copied on all directives and putting it codified and putting it in the charter. Yeah, I mean, to think that the mayor receives all of our requests is cumbersome to me and it, the next mayor may not think that's necessary, so I, I'm happy with the way this is worded.
Um, the, the thing that I wanna accomplish here is, is if council members want a director to come to a meeting and the mayor does not want the director to come to a meeting and it is for the purpose of inquiry, I want council to be able to do it anyway. That's what I want. I don't want, I don't want a scenario where like, let's say, I want, you know, and this could be any of us. I want director, there's some legislative purpose or informational purpose that council wants and the mayor says, well, I don't wanna do that until I get a budget. Or I don't want, you know, it's like, I don't want, I don't, I, I want our inquiry, uh, our public inquiry, um, authority to be, what's the word? Definitive and, you know, I want it, I want that to be the authority, not that, I don't want somebody, the mayor or the city administrator to say, no, they're not coming. It, it, you know, if, if it's, if it's for a legitimate purpose that's spelled out in the, in the charter. And I think it is, I think it is, and, you know, we just have to get the right language.
That makes sense to me. I, I just was gonna add, looking at these two provisions again, that the Beachwood, I think this doesn't need to be, from my perspective, this doesn't need to be resolved today, but the language in the Beachwood charter is that this person may be required to attend upon request and participate in all discussions relating to their respective departments. The language currently proposed in this proposed amendment is, shall attend the meeting and answer questions asked by any member of the council related to their powers and duties, which is potentially a little bit different, sounds a little bit less give and take. So council can just think about how they think this should read in order to accomplish the result that you're seeking.
Is, is there a language preference among any members?
I would go along with Director Hannah.
You mean the Beachwood?
Yeah, um, we have a little bit of more expansion in our statement, but that can continue to stay there, right?
Yeah, I, right, I think that's what I'm suggesting, I guess, is it's, it may be worth looking to finesse this a little bit to make sure that you're getting where you wanna get.
Yes.
But is everybody agreed with the goal here that council, this, this is ironclad, as ironclad as it gets, at least, that council has the authority to invite directors and they have the duty to show up and interact with us? That's, that's what we want. And we want it in the charter, uh, so that we don't, because I think we talked briefly about this, that if we did an ordinance with the lan, even with the language now for the purpose of inquiry, you know, the way, I'm just saying the charter reads now in Article three, Section six, there could be, it's problematic with enforcement.
Right, right, cause you sort of run into an, a dispute between, or a conflict between provisions that's not clearly resolved insofar as you have a provision that says that neither the entire council nor any member can give an order to a subordinate of the mayor and then a provision that says for purposes of inquiry, you're allowed to communicate. I don't think those accomplish the, or provide council with the same authority that something like what you're discussing now would, would provide.
Okay.
And, and I don't think that that question is easily resolved in the absence of language like this.
All right. Any other comments about? Now, when it comes to inquiry, uh, just, uh, and by inquiry, I mean, um, when we send emails asking for information, you, you know, not, not anybody showing up, but just information, that can be done. And I'm kind of asking, asking Director Hannah this as well, that can be done through an ordinance. Like just getting timely information from the administration through other vehicles, you know, emails, texts, um, verbal, you know, private meetings, you know, could I meet? You know, that, that's not, I, I'm separating that from compelling a administrative official to show up, so.
So I, I, I think council would have authority, you're asking under the existing language.
Well, under this language, I, I, I would really wanna ask under this language for the purpose, you know, would we be able to, you know, if we send emails and ten days go by and we don't get an answer and it has a legislative purpose, so it's an inquiry. I mean, this has happened like numerous times. I, so I already, I mean, that's documented, that's in the books. I have, I have unanswered emails, I got a folder of unanswered emails. My question is, what do we need to do to make sure that we get timely information outside of or in addition to, uh, you know, in-person, public meeting, uh, attendance?
The first sentence of the second paragraph of this, uh, Section three point one two says that the mayor, city administrator and city administrative officers and employees shall respond to inquiries from council members in a timely manner.
So do we need to?
Which is not made, that, that obligation is not tethered to attending a meeting.
Do we need to specify anything how that? I mean, I, is it, that's so broad that we don't have to worry about whether or not it's a email, a text, a, a phone call or a, uh, a request to speak to somebody in person?
I mean, there's nothing in here that requires you to utilize any particular means of communication.
Would this, the way this is worded, would, does this require some type of clarifying ordinance? Or is it, or is it just so broad and succinct? At the same time that we don't need to worry about that.
Do you have that, do you have the liquid language? Yeah, do you by chance?
You know, I did send that to you, but it's not on, I didn't send it to you with the.
Uh, and any employee of the city or appointee of any board commission of the city shall furnish within a reasonable time upon request to any member of council any information requested within his knowledge or responsibility relating to the city and activity done or contemplated by, for or on behalf of the city or in the furtherance of his powers and duties or pending or potential legislation. Those such requests shall be unuseful to delay.
And that's, Addie, that's from, um, that's a request from the council or from a, any member of council?
Uh, any member of council.
So I think this language could be further expanded. I don't know that it's substantively different than that, but to the extent that, again, council feels like it wants, you know, some additional safeguards built in or some additional specificity built in, you could do that.
I mean, uh, Chairman Cobb, the administrative services, I mean, you know, that could be part of what we look at. I don't know if we wanna add anything to this, and I'm not saying we necessarily should, but I.
You, you could if you needed to buy time, and I'm sorry for interrupting you. Theoretically had, leave something like this and expand it with, um, in such fashion as council may further determine by ordinance or something like that, along the lines of the other provision we discussed. In case you decide that you need to revisit it and tighten things up or make them more specific in the future, but don't wanna take that time between now and August.
That makes a lot of sense to me because in new world times, when I've done an inquiry to, for information or attendance, haven't gotten response at all, so, so having this discussion as we're going through this, emphasizing it in the charter, we deserve a response to our inquiries and.
Well, we need response to do our jobs, that's, that's.
In a timely manner, so there's, does, so that the people that were requesting information or attendance from don't think that they have to respond today, but they do need to give us a response.
Yeah, and that, that gets into, you know, how specific do we wanna get about what a timely response.
But adding Director Hannah's statement about as referred, whatever you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense to me because then that gives us, in the future, should we be encountering this again?
So I, I wanna be clear that we don't, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, cause I also think one, one potential benefit of ensuring that you have the authority in the charter and leaving yourselves room to make some further determinations to reflect to the realities on the ground, you know, in the future, uh, also might help to prevent a situation, which I don't think council wants, and I know the administration wouldn't want, which is employees being buried in requests that they're obligated to respond to and suddenly they're spending the bulk of their time trying to answer requests because there's a legal obligation to do so. I don't envision that happening, but you could imagine abuses that could occur. And so you, you're sort of treading a fine line.
I think every council has somebody that's just a little overzealous.
Right.
Go ahead.
Yes, a disruptor, but.
You pointed to me.
No, I was pointing, I was pointing. Um, so the, it's the escalation that I'm worried about. So you have timely manner. So how do you, I mean, would you, would you need to define something? Would you need to have some escalation? Would you need to have some arbitrator come in to determine a timely manner? I mean, it's like, I wanna like, my head starts spinning and, or, or, or do you just leave, leave, or is just timely manner good enough?
I think in general it's good enough, but again, I think that might be the benefit of ensuring that you have some room to take further action as maybe necessary, you know, later. Because a different request, what's timely for one request may be very different than what's timely for another request or another inquiry.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Does make a lot of sense, and then.
And then so if you try to pin it down really specifically, I think it's a, it's an impossible task.
And then there was the, what was just mentioned, you know, what happens if a particular, uh, employee is given forty requests in a day, which is not gonna happen, so you're gonna drown them in work. And there's no way they could honor a timely request because you put too much, too much work on them.
But if there were a particular piece of legislation under consideration by council, multiple council members could be interested in it, right? And could theoretically each reach out with multiple inquiries in the space of a week.
Same questions being asked.
You know, so you, so it might not be easy to respond timely, even if some of those requests are relatively easy as freestanding issues. Um, and maybe that's a situation where a conversation needs to take place with council leadership then about how do we figure out whether there's seventeen questions or, you know, a hundred and seventeen.
So you, you bring up a huge important point. It, it's just a matter of practice and a matter of, you know, I look at it as respect. Ninety-nine percent of the time when I have an email going to a committee meeting or a committee member or a city person, or I get a reply, I copy Tony. I copy council president, just because not only do I feel your job is being our spokesperson, I also look at your job as sort of being our clearinghouse of things, being aware of something. So if I send you something, and I, and this is where I wanna make sure that we're not doing like a round robin kind of situation. But, you know, let's say that we talk about traffic data or the difficulty of getting traffic data or you have some traffic data, um, you know, I'll generally send, if I've worked with JJ to get it or whoever or Chief Britton, um, I, I would just send whatever I have to Tony. If it was Chief Britton, I would also include the mayor just, just out of respect. So, Gail. Gail comes across and is thinking of some legislation and runs across something. Um, and finds some data and shares that with Tony at that point. And then Tony says, oh, I remember this, and then he sends it to me. Um. Are we now skirting the issues of dealing with the round robin kind of communication?
Is this a committee that you're both on?
Well, yeah, which.
It's, it's. This is an additional reason, I think, that making some of those requirements formal, um, is something that would take some time. But you all are familiar with, and you're gonna have more training soon, I think, on OMA issues and how to. Um. Conduct and pursue communications in ways that doesn't run afoul of the OMA. Um, so you're not having round robin or other inadvertent, um, public meetings. Um, that are, that are private meetings discussing public business, even mistakenly by email, something like that. I think copying the council president puts the council president in a position, yes, I'm pointing to you. Um, to, uh, to reach out and just say, hey, uh, there's, you know, we're gonna revisit this in committee of the whole, something like that.
Right.
Um, it's short and sweet, people will need to understand that they shouldn't say, well, why, I understand that Gail has asked for this or this and like, because it's that.
Conversation, discussion.
Yeah, yeah, once you, once you go down that road, it's hard to, to draw the lines. But, but as a general practice and as a, um, sort of a management tool, I think copying the president of council could make sense.
Yeah, so in my early, there was no discussion in my earlier. It was a sharing of information, it was just like, oh, I've got a data file, nobody's talking about that data file. But, you, you know, Tony has seen it and said it is basically pointing to another data file to look at. And I would hope then, conversation, I mean, when we've, when we've had situations like that in our small safety committee meeting. I can't come up with an example off the top of my head, but it's been like, this is for discussion in our, in, in our meeting. So you're, you're just sharing a piece of data, you're not commenting on it, there's no discussion, it's just that data for the upcoming committee meeting.
Right, and so in the forty inquiries in a week scenario, that's where I'm thinking again, maybe the, maybe it's an issue of the president saying, I'm going to, you know? Please be advised, I'm going to be asking the, the committee chair to set up a special meeting to, you know, address this. And then you have most of that conversation in, in public.
Okay.
So a couple of things, um.
But, but how much of that you, I think it's difficult to distill that all into written rules that you would especially to put in the charter. Which again, is a justification for maybe ensuring that you have the authority memorialized in the charter. And then flesh it out as necessary in ordinance.
So we were talking about what is a timely manner, you were talking about.
Yeah.
So pending legislation, I, I'm looking at the liquid, you know, which we, you don't have in front of you, but it's, you know, it says pending legislation or potential legislation. But we know that pending legislation would be a little more urgent than potential legislation, I mean, just in a general sense. My question is, do we wanna, in an ordinance, would we wanna like? Say something about that because, you, you know, maybe, maybe shorten the period of time or maybe define it a little more? Because, you know, this is the issue for me, and I, this came up and with the let's save legislation, but it came up dozens of other times. That's the one that just sticks out, you know, it's like, hey, you know, you want us to vote? I, I gotta know now, I can't, you can't tell me afterwards, you know? So is that where we wanna make the distinction, if we wanna make a distinction in, in an ordinance? Or, or is it still not worth making a distinction?
Well, it might, I mean, I think that's a conversation that you could work through with regard to an ordinance. Um, but I think that you would not wanna try to make that distinction in the charter.
Okay.
I, I think even with regard to an ordinance, um, you run a risk of creating rules that may not be capable of being. Uniformly complied with.
Yeah.
Where, you know, it's, that, you know, in, in college, if you have a theology class or something like that, you look at the Bible and sort of the, you know? Or, or another text of, you know, specific commandments or requirements versus general requirements. And you have a discussion about which is more effective, which is more all encompassing.
Yeah.
Um, I don't remember what the answer was, but, um. But I think that here, um, timely is somewhat flexible. And the question of what is timely is going to by necessity vary with regard to, uh, a different inquiry.
So in, in any of these things, we don't have an enforcement mechanism in the sense that there is no penalty for non-compliance. Um, there might be a remedy like court or something like that, but, you know, I, I don't know if anybody ever wants to go to court.
It's usually not efficient.
Yeah, but, you know, two years later, you find out, yeah, okay, but, um, on the, is. I know it says in the charter, we've talked about this, um, the mayor has to enforce all ordinances, you know, or.
Sure.
Yeah. When they don't.
I mean, the mayor is the conservator of the peace and, yeah, has, is to.
And when the mayor doesn't, but can council to censor them, what, what is a, what is a remedy? If there's anything at all, I just wanna know what it is.
Um, I'm not i- in a position to provide, I think, an answer that I would believe is fully, um, complete. Uh, on the fly on that, but I think that as a general matter, some of those questions, in some cases. There are duties imposed upon an official that could put somebody, a taxpayer, someone else in a position to file them in Damas action. It's difficult to do, and it, it requires very specifically being able to find a clear obligation on the part of the public official. And very specifically finding an, um. You know, that there's no alternative remedy for the injured party and it's complicated.
Yeah, so what does council do?
So the fallback typically is ultimately voters will make these decisions.
Right, okay.
Um, so, yeah, so those are some of the reasons that I wouldn't wanna try to fully address that today.
No, I do.
And I also don't know that you have to fully address that to make. Good and substantial progress with like this much more limited question that, that you're looking at right now.
So. There's this whole issue with pool, pool and the lifeguards. Okay. And how council before my time asked the mayor to do this and put some legislation together for that. Um, so theoretically, if that was worded correctly. And, and passed by council, someone from the outside can come in and. Do a filing that would force that action to happen, is that, is that correct?
If, if it were different legislation, because the legislation that was passed was lacking in that enforcement.
That, that, that I've heard.
But let's just say.
It's got a clear obligation, clear right on the part of the person, you know, aggrieved to see the performance of that. And no adequate remedy, um, I'm, I'm not gonna apply that to the legislation that you're discussing. Um, I mean, that, that is an issue that council can think through and should.
So, but that's outside the charter, there was. And.
Well, the part of the charter that applies, and it's in the current charter, is that the mayor has to enforce all ordinances. The question is if it's, if it's not properly, but in, you're, you're suggesting if it is properly worded and enforceable. What would be the remedy for that?
A- actually, that's a slippery slope, I'm more concerned about, we don't need to make any changes to the charter to enact that. There's nothing, there's nothing in the charter that we would need to change.
In, in the case you're talking about, I think it's just passing a proper piece of legislation.
Exactly, and it's not, and I, what I'm saying is, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's relevant with the charter because there's already a pass.
It, it probably is not.
The, the language that you're, that you're referring to, Mr. President, is the mayor shall be the chief conservator of the peace within the city. Shall serve as director of public safety and shall see that all laws and ordinances are enforced therein. I think that's what you're referring to, right? But I think that that is, yeah, the, the, the question of the specific legislation that you're discussing is, is somewhat different.
All right, I think we should move on, but just to summarize, because this is a very important part of the charter. And this does give us, give council. The authority to, to get timely answers to inquiries, and it does give council the authority. And we're, we may wanna massage some of the wording towards the Beechwood version. But, uh, the council would have the authority to compel directors to, uh, attendance. And their interaction with council, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna massage.
I mean, yeah, there's gonna be a sort of a wrap up as, um, when this is done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do like a wrap, you know, like in April, like let's just say best case scenario, we, we do follow the timeline. Um, yeah, I think that's what we do with the last meeting before we turn it over to you.
I mean, to include some language, um, recognizing council's authority to potentially further elaborate on the requirements in an ordinance. Um, for instance, right now, it says the council president or a committee chair, you know, when they've made that request. The person requested shall attend the meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, so.
That's, that's specific, you may at some point wanna treat that differently. And so I would just recommend leaving that option open to yourselves to determine differently.
That's, that sounds good. Um, let's take a five minute break and then we'll start with executive powers, is that agreeable? Yeah?
Yes.
Five minutes, everybody, five minutes, okay. Okay, we are back, uh, after a probably ten minute break. And, um, just so people watching know, uh, we're gonna break again at noon. Uh, we're gonna break from noon to one, and then we're gonna come back, uh, uh, and go one to three. Uh, so, uh, we finished up, um, article three, which is council and, am I right? Is it art, we're on article four now?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I don't think there were any questions about the mayor's term in office, which is four years. Um, so we'll skip down, not skip down, but we'll go to executive powers of the mayor.
I didn't even have any notes on.
I didn't have any notes on that either.
Okay.
Did you have any notes on that, Director Hannah?
Give you just one moment, I'm sorry.
My, mine's, mine started formally.
Yeah, um, you know, I wrote a note here to myself. That you, you see the part in the middle that says in midline, the mayor shall prepare and submit reports required by council. The mayor in a timely manner shall exercise powers and perform duties conferred upon or required of the mayor by this charter. Or by ordinance or by general laws. Um. I know the mayor's not compelled to spend all the money in the budget, but. Is there anything, I mean, I don't know, is there? It doesn't seem to be, I guess, I guess, Director Hannah, that's, that's not a law, right? The budget, it's, it's not saying you have to spend this money.
It's an authorization.
It's an authorization, but if they don't do it, it's not, they're not going against an ordinance, right?
I, I mean, as a very general statement, I would say that's correct.
Okay.
Um, I do have a question about this when, when you guys are done.
I, I don't really have anything.
Okay. So the one, one note that I had made, um, previously relates to the new language, um, in the middle of. Section three, executive powers, the mayor shall prepare and submit any reports required by council. The mayor in a timely manner shall exercise powers and performs, perform duties conferred upon or required of the mayor by this charter. By ordinance or by general laws. My concern is, um, the potential need to qualify by ordinance. Because I think that it's, it's not appropriate to try to provide for. An ability to change by ordinance the powers and duties conferred upon the mayor by charter. And so if, if there were a desire to change. The, uh, powers and duties conferred upon the mayor in the charter, you should change the charter. But I think this is a situation where trying to kick that to an ordinance in the future is not really consistent with the charter. It's possible you could say that are not inconsistent with this charter. Um, something like that, qualify, uh, by ordinance.
Could I ask the committee members if there's a, a rationale there that you put the language you did?
Um, I think it was just a recognition that perhaps there was some frustration with the mayor not following through on some legislation that council had passed. That was really, I think, what was driving that.
Okay, but that's covered in that, in a sense, uh, Director Hannah, that's covered in the.
I mean, it, it is, except that that lang, you're talking about the language I recited a moment ago. Um, I would say it is because that's been in place, you know, for many, many years, maybe a hundred or more. But, but that is useful because I think that suggests that this is not, just as I said, an attempt to allow. The council to try to change the power and authority of the mayor in the future. It's, this has more to do with enforcement of ordinances.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
And, and not necessarily enforcement, but performing duties that an ordinance, the ordinance says the mayor shall do thus and such.
Right.
Council's expecting the mayor's gonna do it.
As lo, as long as it doesn't say to discharge, you know, an assistant director of law or something like that. Because that's something that's by charter purely conferred to the mayor, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay, so you could.
Yeah, so I, yeah, that, that helps.
Any other questions about four point three?
Oh, yeah, not to complicate.
No, no, that's what we're here for. Details.
And I, this, I think this. And I don't know if you recall this, Bill, that we, we have had a prior brief discussion about. Where exactly in either the charter or the city ordinances? Um, is it spelled out who is in control of city properties?
Um.
And the only provision that I could find any place is in, uh. The city ordinances, specifically one twenty-one point oh five. A, uh, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to establish rules and regulations governing the conduct and performance. Of all city employees and the care, control and use of all city property. Provided such rules and regulations are not inconsistent with the charter and city ordinances.
So that sounds like it's the answer.
If, if my review of everything is correct.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at that. But the mayor's the chief executive, the chief administrative officer. The head of the government for ceremonial and executive purposes, I think that's consistent with all of that.
Well, when it comes to, you know, control of the city properties, for example, um. What if there is some use of city properties that city council, you know, disagrees with?
Like council chambers, let's just.
How is that addressed, and so for example, um, oh, I, I, I just lost my, uh. My, my.
Train of thought.
My train of thought on this, so go on him when it comes back to me, uh. All right, so for example, the question came up about the, the, the city's website. And the city's, um, you know, social media accounts. And of course, you know, when the charter came in these ordinances, there was no, you know, there was no email, there was no social media, you know? So is this the provision that vests the mayor power and authority over that?
Well, I think the, the provisions that I just referenced from the charter also do that. Um, under the current language of the charter and the ordinances. Um, I think this is, I keep saying this and it sounds like a dodge, I don't mean it that way, this is a bigger conversation probably. But, um. I don't think there's any question that council could have authority, you know, to spend money to do something. I don't think there's any question that council could have authority, you know, to spend money to do something council wanted to do like. Hire the communications consultant, potentially some other communications tools that's. Challenging in certain respects or complex in administration for all the reasons we discussed earlier, having to do with the Open Meetings Act and and so forth. But um I don't think that that would undo. The authority that's otherwise conferred to the mayor with regard to city property and the being the chief executive and the ceremonial and executive head of the government.
What's your concern?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to determine where where is it inherent, or maybe it's just inherent that that um, you know, that the mayor. Even if even if it's silent, ha- has certain powers and duties inherent in being the. Uh, chief uh executive for the city when it comes to the control of city properties. But and so the thought, what I couldn't think of before, so when he wants to sale or dispose of um, you know, city real property, for example. You you need city council approval to do that.
Right.
Where where is is there a provision in our charter or ordinances that requires him to come to us for that?
In the ordinances, yeah. But there's also the the fallback position, I think, or the fallback uh provision, I think, is the mayor. Shall supervise the administration of the city's affairs and shall exercise control over all departments and divisions. You couple that with authority over staff and with being the head of the government and the chief executive and the chief administrative officer. So that with respect to the website question that you asked, I think that's the that's the answer to that question. Again, I think council could. Take action to um provide for other communications tools tools for council. I do think it's a large discussion though, insofar as um, it's not say it couldn't be done, and there's probably other cities that have done this, so that would be someplace to look. But um, city council is a is a part of the city of Cleveland Heights government. Just as the administration is, just as, you know, the court is in a in a certain sense. Um, and so setting up, but there's a municipal court website, using that example, actually, that just came to me. You know, it it has a different standing than the than the council does, but there may be a way for that to happen that doesn't. Start to suggest that the council is something separate from the city, which I'm always adverse to.
Yeah, well, if I could, I just um, the city of Cleveland city council has its own webpage. Separated apart from uh the city of Cleveland's. And so there's a link, just, you know, just like there's a link on our website to the to the court's website. And there are communications in a newsletter that the city of Cleveland's city council um has and and publishes.
Have you guys, has, have you talked with them, the Blaine Griffin or anyone else about how that is administered, how it functions?
I have not. I just happened to look. I mean, it's it's obviously, it's a it's a different, larger enterprise organization.
But there but there probably are, I I would all but guarantee there are other cities that have done something similar. I haven't studied that, but um, I think that's again. A a bigger picture issue that council may wish to to think about and if you're sending. Proposed amendments to the voters this fall and if something needs to be changed in order to accommodate that, doing that in that timeframe would make sense.
But, you know, I think.
So I wanna follow up on something you just said about the disposition of public properties. I remember a piece of legislation coming before us like a year and a half ago. That basically said that the mayor could dispose of properties and just notify council thirty days afterwards. Now, we didn't pass it, but the que- you know, I know that, I know that like usually the revised code of any state does not allow. You to give up your rights, like you, even if you sign something like that, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't supersede. And listen, I I shouldn't talk like this, cause I'm pretending I know the law and I don't really, but. You know, I know in the landlord tenant law, which I did spend a lot of time with, you couldn't, you couldn't sign a lease and say, you know, tenant, tenant makes all repairs. You know, uh, cause the landlord tenant, no, you could, but it's not, it's an unenforceable entry because um, I've seen this hap- seen this go to court before. You.
Residential or commercial?
Residential. And and uh, you know, it's been tried at the state level and it's like it's an unenforceable entry to a contract. I don't know if this is a comparable um. You know, but uh, we we're we're not giving up anything like that in the charter, I I I mean, it, you know, so. So if if a legislation comes before us that says, you know. Administration can dispose of properties and does not have to come to council until thirty days after, just to notify them that it happened. Is that, uh, I mean, I know.
Respectfully, I'm not gonna answer a hyper.
I'm sorry.
Question. That's okay?
I'm sorry, I'm doing the thing that I probably said minutes ago I won't do, but I guess the question. The broader question of. Is the mayor's um authority, legal authority in the in the charter. Over all city properties? The answer's yes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say yes, um, but I would also say to, at the risk of repeating myself, that the broader question, I think, specifically with respect to issues like. Website, just using that as an example, I think is worth, you know, council looking at and the law department can assist in that, um, you know, going forward.
So it looks to me like this section, the wording of it is okay with us, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
It is.
Alright, so.
Looking at still section three, executive powers? So the only asterisk I would put there is that I do wanna look at the um by ordinance issue to.
Yeah.
That's all.
To in further clarify.
Yeah.
But I think Hannah got a last question, so four point four. This is about the city administrator. I I very much recall the debate, which was to be a little more specific about the qualifications. And specifically that was. Municipal operations experience.
We said municipal or other governmental operations.
Yeah, and and Craig, you remember what you added to it? But did we actually come up with language? I guess that's.
We, it it was it was sort of broadly defined, just you wanted some, you know, governmental experience.
Operations, government operations experience.
Related to municipal and or other governmental operations. That came after the word experience.
So I, how comfortable are we all with that? Okay, cause that was.
Especially since we've been through these particular situations recently and it makes sense.
Do do, what did we? What did we say about the the crossing out of be responsible for the preparation? Of the uh annual budget presentation, for presentation? I just put why cross this out. Obviously, go to the charter review for that, yes.
Finance director does it with the mayor. It's covered in the budget section.
Yeah, what I liked about it was uh assist in the preparation is is that, you know, what happens if? You know, you don't have a finance director or something. Now, I know that the mayor, if there's nothing there, the mayor could assign that duty to the city administrator. Uh, so I don't know, what's, what's the best way to approach this? Have it in or knowing that we if we have it out, the mayor could feasibly do that. Go ahead, Kyle.
Can I just offer, I I'm what, did the research here and did some other composition with the blessing of the commission. But in other, there is no other city that I look at that the finance director is not designated as the one responsible for assisting with the budget. And if there is gonna be, so that's, I mean, there's no reference to, oh, and then the city administrator is going to do the budget. Finance director, that's their expertise, that's their competence, that's their role, that's what they're doing. Of course, you know, the mayor can ask, you could, the mayor could ask the city administrator, city uh anything, right? Including assist with the budget, but being responsible for the budget is different from assisting the budget. And that's a distinction I would bank.
In the current, I could have sworn it said, this doesn't look like the language that I saw in the charter. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a computer with me.
Our current charter?
Yeah, I thought it says the word assist and not um be responsible for the preparation, I mean.
It says subject to the, yeah, your supervision and control.
But is the word assist in there?
No.
No.
Okay, my bad.
Well, shall assist in the operation of the mayor's office and subject to the mayor's supervision and control be responsible for.
Alright, I guess that's right.
Which is what's.
Okay, I'm I'm okay with being out. Anything else on that?
Can can you just hold on a second while we lost you? There was.
Four point four.
Well, but there was another section in the charter that talked about the budget. I'm trying to find it.
That's what Linda is referring to.
Yeah, we'll get there.
What section is that, Jim?
Article nine.
Budget section.
Article nine.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Oh, yeah.
We will get there, that's all I needed to know.
And then at some point, Jim, we're gonna have to make sure that everything we've done comports with other parts of the budget, that it doesn't interact. In a way that causes conflict. I mean, it's kinda hard to do that now unless you're actually remembering other stuff. That's like out there and 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 sometimes that'll happen. Hopefully, we can sometimes just, hey, didn't it say somewhere else? But that's.
Not, I'm sorry.
But I I I'm pretty sure that that's why you all spent so much time looking at. Counterbalances, other place in places in the charter as you, where did you work? And so um.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, and so that.
I mean, there were a lot of places where we qualified things to say, subject to something else or accept as otherwise provided, this is the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we did that. I'm not saying we were perfect, but we did try to do that.
Well, and Director Hannah will be do, looking for that same confirmation when he does his review.
Yeah, no, I think they looked at, I I think they took a lot of care to do that and.
Yeah.
It's something that we should take care with and who knows if there will be anything we need to further.
And to be fairly, Crumryne really was very, very helpful in that respect, very thoughtful.
So the and the the language that's with regards to this question in the city administrator and the budget responsibility, the language that the commission came up with. Not to jump there, but it's mere with the assistance of staff, including the director of finance. So that obviously um allows the city administrator to be included there and but mandates that the director of finance is included. So. Um, I think that works.
Did uh. I I notice, I I got a note here uh. This is but otherwise his per approval. We wanna make sure we don't like keep. I guess we could do gender neutral language for another time. You don't really need to.
Yeah, it's just throughout, we should.
Okay.
That's encouraged by the commission as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I didn't see anything in here.
Which section you look here?
Four point five, I I mean, seems pretty straightforward. And I don't see anything in the notes.
Uh, there's some, uh, a lot of, I had a note that a lot of companies are reviewing the section regarding the line item language.
Yeah, I see that. If upon such reconsideration, the ordinance. Line item or resolution is approved by the votes of five or more. Of the members of council, it shall take effect, notwithstanding disapproval of the mayor. Some.
That line item is throughout this whole section?
Yeah.
Yep. Is that, do, does anybody remember who was, thought that was vague or required clarity? Cause I don't.
Yeah, that's all I had written down. Council president, there was a question that that um, Mr. Hannah was gonna research concerning whether. Just to confirm that the the phrase line item veto is referring to money, it's monetary items as opposed to being able to make a line of text. In in um, piece of legislation. I think that was from Mr. Petrus.
That makes sense.
So, um, Linda, what was the um, commission's view on inserting that term line or the word line?
The word, it was already there. If you look at the beginning of the language, there was already a reference to um. The whole or any item of an ordinance appropriating money and we put in the word line because. I think we felt that that was really the way people think about a line item budget on monetary matters is it's it's monetary, it's not taking out a sentence. Um, I think that's what was our thinking. Do you have any recollection about that, Ki, you hear it?
No, but I believe that's the, that I agree with you.
So in just using the word item, what you brought, right? Okay, got it.
And yeah, I.
Look at the first reference to it, it says, mayor may approve or disapprove the whole or any line item of an ordinance appropriating money. So it didn't say line item, it just said any item of an ordinance appropriating money. And we felt that any word line made clearer.
Okay.
And part of the the follow-up research was to be um, just ensuring that the language worked, make clear throughout that. The line item reference always refers to an ordinance appropriating money.
Alright, four point six. Nothing, I mean, I always speak up, I don't, I don't see anything. It's when we get to um Article Five, that I think we. You know, we, I know what the debate was, uh, five point one departments. It was how much authority does council? Want over uh appointments, uh, confirmation. I believe, Craig, you were just a big three or were you a four?
No, I'm sitting here looking, uh, law, finance, planning and public works according to the notes, right?
Okay. Any thoughts? I think the debate basically was. You know, would, do we really wanna be involved in, how many positions are there? Hundred twenty.
Directors? Probably about right.
Yeah, I mean, it was just a little um cumbersome and time consuming to do all of them.
The ones that are already in here, there are seven of them, which are really important, strategic to the function of city. I think that, I believe that's why I said I supported that. I didn't wanna, I would not support my own words of restricting it to law, finance, planning, public works. I would like to leave this language as it, as is. That's Larson.
Okay.
Okay. Other thoughts? Jim Petrus, are you there?
Yeah, I am.
Um, confirmation over all appointments, some appointments of directors.
I I am fine with it being just some, um, I think administrator, law department, finance director as it currently is. That would be sufficient for me, but if others were interested in being all directors, I would be looking on board with that too.
I think planning is already covered as well.
Alright. Craig, can you say the four again? Or the ones right now?
Uh, well, we were just adding an additional one and that was public works. So it's uh law, finance, planning and public works. Right now, public works does not require approval. I I think the discussion was that these were the four most important. Department heads that served at the pleasure of uh whoever the mayor was.
I have to be honest, this is one I haven't thought about since we talked about it. The other stuff I went over.
You know, looking at the other, if you go on our website, we have a lot of departments that are listed.
Yeah.
You know, so for example, you know, HR is listed as a department on our website, but I think the conversation was, well, there really isn't any HR department.
It's a division.
It's it's a division. Uh, I mean, do we, do we really wanna, you know, to ha- have the mayor have to get confirmation as to who the. Who the Department of Community Services is, which is essentially the communications uh director, um, the. which is essentially the communications director, um, the recreation department. You know, I just uh. I I don't know. I think.
Yeah, better hand up before me.
It becomes a logistics issue, right? If we have to do that so often because we've expanded the number of departments that we're asking for approval on, then it then it kind of holds back the administration from continuing to get these positions filled. Um, especially since we've seen the turnover we've had recently. Um, I think that's where my mind was that then when we had this discussion before, that law, finance, planning development and public works were the ones that made most sense to me. So then I clarify my own words. Thank you.
I don't have enough experience on this council to really kind of like have an opinion. But I've got like a thought that is, I I have a couple of thoughts. I mean, we, when we look at the amount of turnaround, um that's an anomaly. You know, we can, we we can say maybe it's a new form of government, maybe that's why the anomaly is, but it's an anomaly that you have this amount of turnover. Um, I conceptually like the idea of the appoint of confirming appointments because it sort of makes all sides sort of like vested in the inner workings of the city. Um, and almost as if it's like our finance director as opposed to the mayor's finance director. I mean, there's a big difference between those two things. I mean, we voted for our finance director. And I think that just from a an operational standpoint, I mean, we don't have like day-to-day authority over over the finance director nor nor should we. But we've sort of bought into this. It's it's like our person too. And um you know, when you have sort of like, when the mayor has to come to us to do an appointment like this or ratify an appointment, it just sort of makes it more like our government together collaboratively as opposed to a one-sided legislative versus administrative executive side of the branch. Um, but then, you know, I haven't been, again, I haven't been on this, you you guys have been on the council more than me. So I mean, it's just, that's kind of a gut feeling I have.
Any, any other thoughts? I mean, I could um uh I think the four that you that Craig and Gail mentioned are sufficient for my base and how Jim Petrus also said that. Um, I think that the the terminology, you know, that a mayor might use, my staff, my director, my, you know, I mean, that's they'll use it or they won't, you know, that's it's discretionary and um you know, I I do look at public service, you know, like anybody who works in this building as um you know, being a public employee and and then having that hour mentality. But, you know, the terminology people use, I I I don't know. I mean, that's up to them. I I, but your point is well taken. I mean, as as far as like the way we as individuals look at it, I just don't know that confirming all the appointments is gonna change uh necessarily an executive's approach to the way they look at it.
Yeah.
I I was just gonna mention, Mr. President, that if some of the other changes that council has reviewed even this morning are sent to the voters and approved, it may um accomplish a fair amount of what Councilman Posh is referring to as well. I mean, you're talking about maybe reports from the mayor that council would um would request. Um, the ability to have department heads attend meetings, um, you know, on a more frequent basis potentially, you know, if council requests. Um, those things may all assist in that regard.
I I couldn't agree more. It's it's it's, this is much more the kind of government that that um, I think we're looking for, and I do think that does accomplish that. Um, so since the majority want to, four, we'll, we'll do it that way. And um.
That's consistent with my notes from the last time.
And um it says reorganize the phrasing except as otherwise provided in this charter. At the end of the sentence for clarity.
Oh, under department.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, just move, it just moved to move back to the end of the sentence as opposed to having it in the middle of the sentence and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's like, yeah, isn't that usually come at the end? I don't know, it seems like that's the right place. Um, five point two. Uh, you guys can all see the debate we had on whether directors should be subject to council. Oh, we just talked about that, sorry. Mixed opinion about mayor authority to remove directors. Um. Uh, yeah. Alright, I mean, just anybody wanna start this off?
About removing directors?
Yes. And Councilor Russell talking about whether we should or could have our own legal counsel. Well, we could, but that's not something we need to do in the charter anyway. So, but the other stuff, I mean. Yeah, I I think the mayor. I don't know. I I understand about removing about the director of law part of it. Um. Did we, did we basically agree that the the mayor should be able to remove any other director? Councilman Petrus?
I don't.
Are you sorry, was there a question for me?
Not exactly, but I was just turning to you because.
Just on the top.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, my my general thought is that the mayor should have the flexibility of having the staff that he wants. Folks should serve at the pleasure of the mayor. But in the case of the law director, I still believe that it should be in agreement with council and not a unilateral lateral decision by the mayor to dismiss the law director.
Are you guys still where you were at? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I and I said this before, if, you know, if if the mayor um has lost um you know, faith and confidence in in the law director, it would be you you, the law director would be in an impossible situation because of the unique bond, I think, that exists between a lawyer.
How about a more impossible situation?
Between a lawyer and his client. You mean, you just can't, you can't saddle, you can't saddle the the mayor with with any department head or director that they don't have confidence in, and even more so when it's when it's your lawyer.
That's a weekly, that's a daily, pretty much, interaction. It's not least weekly. Um.
My my position has always been if the client doesn't want me around, you know, we can agree on that. Um, but I think that the the discussion that council is entertaining is potentially larger than that, but that would be my my take on it in any event.
Do do we know what other cities do with this particular item?
I don't know. I've seen a um, a different treatment for law director than other department heads. I have seen sort of the big four treated differently than other, like the 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 folks who are confirmed by council, in other words, are sometimes subject to council approval of removal. Um, I've not done a survey to to look at what most do, but it's not, it's not unprecedented. It's also not unprecedented to allow removal by the mayor without council authority or confirmation.
Not more more common.
I would agree, yeah.
Um, go ahead.
I I do recall some of this conversation, and we're talking about the fact that as as Director Hannan has stated, it would be very awkward if one department one, council or the mayor decided that this relationship didn't warrant anymore. That that puts that particular law director in a very difficult situation. So I do not want any wording on here that would preclude that from, I don't want that to happen. So if this, if these, this wording says it can't happen, does it say that? Where one party, where one party says the law director should leave and the other party says, no, we wanna keep them?
So the current language is that the mayor can remove any director without council authority? And um, I think that's what's reflected in the proposed revision by the commission as well.
And Linda's nodding her just, okay.
I have no change.
Yeah.
No change, alright. We talked about it.
But but there was, but there was discussion about whether council wanted to consider that. And I I I do think it would be particularly hard for that to work effectively in the case of the of the director of law.
Well, I'm waffling here a little bit, but I mean, you also work for us too. I mean, you, your position is, so not you, but the position, so.
I I am the position.
And and it's important to know that, you know, you work for both of us. Um, and giving us the the ability to have a say-so and the removal of such a position, I think um, helps solidify the fact that um, you don't have um, this thing hanging over your head, but I mean, council could go out and hire its own lawyer and if the mayor doesn't like the performance of someone that council house has to agree to have removed, you know, the mayor could go, you know, hire his or her lawyer. Um. That's, you know, I would, I'm waffling here. I mean, my 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 gut is leaning toward the fact that when it comes to law, we should have that authority, but if we don't have enough support, I'd just go back to what the commission has recommended at that point.
You you know, I just look at the uh, the addy amendment, the the clerk of council amendment that we did, which gives us the authority to hire. It it kind of like gives us an alternative. If for some reason the law director, you know, we we, the council felt like, oh my God, we don't, we get no attention. Pay attention to me, pay attention to me, and it's just not happening. We hire somebody, you know? I mean, I feel like we have an alternative. I mean, there's, I mean, they're doing contracts. There's so much, I mean, those of us have been here for a while. We we do see how much law department is engaged in administrative activity. It's, it's just.
Sure.
You know, if if we didn't exist, they'd be busy all the time, you know? Um. Whether that would be desirable or not, I don't know.
Well, but I was gonna mention that that the next section also um addresses, I think, some of what um, Councilman Posh was just expressing with regard to the duties of the law director. This is, these obligations currently exist in the city's ordinances. And as I think I've shared with council in the past, I've never had um, city manager or a mayor in Cleveland Heights push back on the obligations of the director of law and the department of law that run to council, working commission, city employees, et cetera. Um, but putting it in the charter arguably elevates uh, elevates that and makes it more clear that this isn't just a mayoral-serving position. And that's that's newly in the charter, um, if this proposed amendment is is sanctified by council.
So I'm comfortable with uh, the mayor making all you know, hires and fires, you know, serving at the pleasure of the mayor um, because of the provisions that are in there that require uh, the law director to also serve the council and because council has an alternative, you know, I'm comfortable with that. So what, do we have a consensus here? I know that
Okay.
Petrus, the law director to be the exception and here.
Well, like, I sort of feel that way too.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'm not sure we have a majority.
So right now, I I don't know, do we have, we're.
We're gonna need five votes to put any language on.
And Gail, remind me where.
And not that we're taking a vote.
Where are you at here?
I want all of the departments so named to be at the discretion of the removal, removal by the mayor.
Okay, so three of us are there, two of us are not. And then, so we'll see what where the other two are at at another time.
But if if council doesn't come back to this before sort of turning this over for like, you know, legal implementation of the discussed uh, changes, uh, you can, you're still gonna have opportunities to, you know, finalize this, to make additional changes and so forth.
There's always August. Yeah, okay.
Antinous.
Yes. Alright, so. Any other five point? Three. Uh. I don't see anything there that we. Salaries and bonds, five point four.
Mr. President, I apologize. Can I jump back to um, section five point two?
Of course. Did you say B, is that one?
The director of law provision. I think the only suggestion I might have here is to qualify the obligation to be the chief legal advisor to all of the enumerated officials um, with um, language similar to what's in the ordinance currently, which is in matters relating to their official duties. I mean, legally, it wouldn't be possible to do otherwise, but I think it's useful to sort of frame the extent of that obligation of representation.
I like the explicit approach.
I'm sorry, where where would we put that?
I think right after officers prior to the um, semicolon in the third line.
And can you give me that language again?
In matters relating to their official duties.
Thank you.
That clarifies it.
So I see why the city administrator could not be the director of law, finance or planning. Is there anything else anybody would wanna throw in there? This has actually come in handy already, you know, with one time when we didn't have a with Parks and Rec director. I believe Joe Senate was asked to serve in that capacity. Like in interim, no, I don't know if it was like an official thing, but I think it happened. Uh, five point four, salaries and bonds. Just some slight tweaking of language there.
Okay.
Director Hannan, if you see something, obviously, I'd like you to speak up as well.
Don't worry.
Okay. Um. So, six point one. So now we're under the municipal court. Linda, can you remind me, uh, does does this go through seven? Is that the balance of power stuff?
Um, well, we're pretty much done with the balance of power stuff, and now we're getting into um, seven starts with elections.
Okay, okay. So let's just do the court. Um, I I I went over this. I didn't find anything.
Tony, Tony.
Yes, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, did anybody go over this with JJ?
No, we didn't invite him in because we weren't changing this. He did ask us to take something out. He did ask us to take something out about having a mayor's court. So we did do that, we took out the mayor's court.
Okay.
But that was the only comment that he gave us. So we took the only suggestion he gave us.
But he's been represented, he's he's been able to represent the process.
Well, in the sense that he knew where to find us, if he had something to say, so. Yeah, we didn't have him come in because we weren't changing anything relating to the municipal court.
What does?
He had been before the commission in twenty nineteen and I don't even remember whether he mentioned the mayor's court at that time, but he did raise it with us.
So I guess just in the spirit of being inclusive, can someone reach out to the judge, I think, and just say, hey, look, this is this is what we're thinking about? Because it's, I think it's a different sort of like, the rubber's not hitting the road now that we're preparing amendment.
Can I ask, law director, is there any canon of ethics thing where there, you know, this interaction would be outside of what they're allowed to do?
I don't think so, and and I guess, as the, as Linda indicated, the fact that none of this is changing and that he had an opportunity suggests that there's no issues, I could reach out to him and verify that. Let him know that this will be coming, you know, back before council later in the spring, early summer, something like that. And he knows how to find me and find council.
I I think that's good enough. I mean, I just just, I mean, I think we're all.
I'm glad you asked.
Yeah, we're all collaborative body and we want to make sure that everybody's like, has has an option to say something.
All right, on to seven point one and elections. First Tuesday after the first Monday in November of the odd number of years. Just some language tweaking, but not substantive tweaking. Seven point two, ballots. Seven point three, places on the ballot.
I have a question. I apologize. I read more slowly than you think. I mean, than you think. Because I don't remember noticing this before, I guess, because we hadn't gotten here, but I wasn't. Because the question is why primary election is removed from the last line of the first paragraph of section seven point one? A matter that by terms of the charter may be submitted to the electors of the city, a special election may also be submitted at the time of a general election. Had previously said primary election or general election.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Seven point one. The second sentence of the first paragraph. Where primary election is removed.
I don't know that it's critical to get to the bottom of it today, I just hadn't, we haven't looked at this previously.
Yeah, honestly, I have no recollection about that, but I can go back and check the notes.
Okay, and I'll do the same.
Well, isn't that because of the, you know, red choice voting?
Well, I mean.
No, because that's subcontained.
I could take a guess, I mean, the primary election doesn't necessarily happen. So maybe that's why there's this question there.
Also, you, if I could, I I think you're gonna get more voter turnout, the general election and the primary election, I think. Percentage of voters that's turned out for the last primary election versus then the general municipal election.
And that all makes that all makes sense, I just, but but I I probably will try to review the report of the commission to see what's in there, only because this is sort of a a permissive written provision at this point. Says that any matter that could be done, you know, at this time could also be done at this time. I'm just wondering why, you know, what, I just don't know what the reason is that it was sort of curtailed. Not a huge issue, I just.
Yeah.
Ken, just sort of in the, just so I can organize my thoughts here. Have we now walked, have we crossed the line from amendment one to amendment two?
No.
Okay.
Amendment one.
Okay.
So what's our agreement on this, primary election being included or not?
Well.
I think it's gonna be reviewed.
Reviewed?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back and check.
All right, well, while we're doing that, anything in seven point two?
Let me, let me back up on that a second, Ms. Posh, because I think, I think what may happen here is there may be some things in bucket one that are also in bucket two. And they're in both because if you decided to put on bucket one but not bucket two, there were certain changes that would still be relevant and vice versa. So there was a question raised in one of the prior meetings, I think, by by Ms. Larson about redundancy in some of the buckets. And that's the reason for the redundancy, that we gave you five buckets so that if you decided to put some of them, but not all of them on the ballot, they could stand alone, each one could stand alone.
So it's not like, or if there's five initiatives on the ballot and voted and number two is voted down, one and three would still stand?
It would still work.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because I'm looking at a May sixteen draft document that you had from the, and it says clearly, proposed amendment number two.
Yeah, that one does have the election materials in as well.
Yeah, right. Right, okay, so.
You were right in saying have we crossed over, because this stuff is in two.
Okay, it just.
But what isn't in two is the finance stuff.
Okay.
So if you wanted to, you could skip ahead now to the finance stuff and then come back in bucket two to the election stuff, that's that's up to you.
I'm I I'm not questioning the the order, I was just trying to get some clarity on that.
Yeah, sorry.
This is just the full red line, essentially.
Actually, you know what, I've made a mistake here that I need to interrupt for a second. We're actually going from bucket one to bucket three. So what we should be doing now, according to the agenda, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm saying according to the agenda, I left that part out.
I thought you were doing one and two.
Uh, we're doing one, three, and four. So, um, let me find this. One, three, uh, three includes the new charter material relating.
Three is.
Ethics and training of officers.
That's on page twenty seven of the packet.
Right.
Of today's packet.
But if if you want to complete one, you should go to the finance things.
And could you help me with where that is?
It's Article nine. Page fourteen of amendment number one.
But does does Artic, does amendment one, nine include Article seven?
It does.
Okay.
It does, but I think if you want to do all the election stuff in one fell swoop,
Okay.
you might want to skip over seven and come back to it when you go to the rest of the election stuff. But it's up to you, you could keep, you know, going through.
But so so maybe the bigger picture is, I mean, are we visually, I mean, we're, I think, by default, we're looking at putting all, all the buckets on the ballot.
Yes, we are, but proposed amendment two includes seven point two through seven point six. I thought we were, I thought what we agreed to do was proposed amendment, proposed amendment three and four. And according, and I do see, yeah, but we haven't done, so we did seven point one. Linda's right, we should be headed over to Article nine right now. I mean, if we're following the agenda, which we should, which we have to.
Article nine in which bucket? Okay.
Yeah, one.
So we're now on page eighteen of the packets.
And then you'll come back to seven when you're done with the rest of one?
That is in, yeah, it's in, well, it's in amendment two. And if you're gonna do three next, you would not be doing the election stuff, three is ethics and training.
Can I?
The election stuff is really in bucket two.
Can can I?
I'm just looking at the red line in 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 proposed amendment one.
Right, it has part, it has seven in it because these things you would want to have in case you didn't do bucket three.
Okay. Can can I make a motion to move that we follow the, I mean, you have what's printed on the agenda on the cover page, but then you also have the materials that we have, you know, going through twenty nine pages of documents. And I'd like to propose that we just follow the order of the.
Well, if if you look.
Document we have here. I I I will default to whatever you want.
I'm just saying, proposed amendment one includes, and then it has a list, and it goes from seven point one to Article nine, to Article eleven, to Article fourteen, to Article fifteen and sixteen. So if that is indeed the bucket, I think we should follow that.
It goes from seven point one to seven point six, right?
Well, it just says revise section seven point one. And then it skips down to revised Article nine.
Yeah, so if you want to, if you want to strictly stick to the agenda, we should go through seven.
All of seven?
Because it's in here, well, it's what's in here.
Okay, because that's, I I didn't realize, I'm reading.
Those will have been dealt with by the time you come back to them in amendment two.
Exactly.
Okay, but it's.
What the agenda provided for.
Yeah, no, and I think that might make it.
Trying to respect the agenda.
Easier to keep track of as well.
Yeah, it said seven point one on the cover sheet for overview of proposed amendments. So that's why I thought it skipped, but you don't need to. Okay, so seven point two, we just talked about.
Seven point one you just talked about.
Oh, seven point one, okay, seven point two?
Is ballots.
Ballots.
There's really no changes in seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five.
In amendment one?
In amendment one.
Um, what do you guys, on seven point three, what does everybody think about having fifty signatures?
That's in another bucket.
That's seven point three.
But that's.
In another bucket, that's in.
So if you just walk through proposed amendment one, there are red lines to section seven point one and then seven point six. That's all that's touched in Article seven.
And then I just misunderstood, it was just said like sixty seconds ago.
Amendment point two covers those changes. This, this isn't the changes, this is what would happen if you didn't pass.
Okay.
Bucket two.
So we should skip now to?
Seven point six.
Seven point, okay.
Which really doesn't have any substantive changes.
Okay, and then do we, if you're, if we're following this, do we go to seven point seven or?
Or you go to nine?
Nine, tonight.
Nine point one, seven point seven, we took that out because it's, you know, it's it's in state law.
It's already covered by the general laws, yeah.
No reason to say it.
That makes sense.
Just wanted to see the question.
Yeah.
Sorry. When people are reading this, should we get it on the ballot? There is no Article eight, is that gonna confuse people? I'm just asking.
There aren't any changes to eight. I mean, the the legislation will make clear, you know, the ballot language will make that clearer, but for purposes of reviewing the changes, there weren't changes to eight that were relevant to bucket one, I don't remember what eight is.
Could we put that as a statement in here?
You could.
Initiative reference, I recall.
There's eight.
Oh, eight, so eight's covered in another bucket.
Okay.
All right, is everybody ready to move on to nine? All right, so this is Article nine finances. Nine point one. Has that really been substantively changed?
Oh, it's all red.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. I'm surprised something like that wouldn't have been, is this from the Howard Vice Code, Linda?
Katie, want to speak to this?
Yeah, um, no, I did not refer to Howard Vice Code for this. I I I referred to other other municipality charges.
All right, and changing our fiscal year.
It's, sorry, it's not.
Fiscal year or the calendar year, are we are we doing a calendar year basis now?
You are. It just makes it clear, it had not been stated in the in the charter previously. And having a definition of your fiscal year is pretty important when you're doing.
Now, does this in any way, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, we're, this is a significant, and I haven't read this, this is a significant change from the current section.
So, Katie, why don't you review what what your thought process was in putting this together? Because I think we we reviewed this pretty thoroughly. But just to allow council to kind of catch up, because it's been so long since this stuff was distributed, it's hard for everybody to remember.
Yeah, exactly, that's good. So the the, just reviewing the commission, as a commission, we met, one of the sections is finance. And my background has to do with that a bit. And so I took, we looked at that, and basically, the description that's in the current charter and the process that has been used in memory, don't, don't jive. Okay, so the description that's in the charter is irrelevant to the practice, which doesn't, which is not a good practice, which is not good. So then, the approach was, well, what what has been the practice? And is that practice a good practice? And if it's a good practice, do people will support it? If they support it, it's a good practice, then let's let's, to some degree, let's let's make that specific. All right, that was, that's been the approach. So in twenty twenty three, the budget process to prepare the budget for twenty twenty four was in the opinion of the people, everyone I talked to, which which was the assistant, the acting finance director, Melody Hart, who had been on council, I don't know, several. Melody Hart, Tara Schuster, Tony. And then the director of finance of the City of South Yucle. City of South Yucle does a real nice job of of budgeting and all, okay, so that, so.
Who's the former director here, right?
I believe so, yes, yeah, actually, right, yeah, she's the, she's, she's. And so Mayor Wheeler helped us by getting access to her. So so those are the people I talked to, all right? And universally, everybody who was associated with the budget process in twenty twenty three praised it. All right, it was effective, it was timely, people had the information they wanted, that they needed. I think when we went through, there's there's a budget book, which you're probably familiar with, you used, something you used. So when I went through the budget book with Tara Schuster, it was like, it was complete. We we talked about a couple of things that could maybe make it a little bit better or whatever, but everybody praised that process. So I looked at that process, and then I looked at, then I looked at what what has gone on in other cities, okay? And there's two or three cities that were really, cities of Lakewood and Shaker were actually quite clear about the way they do their budgeting. University Heights now, they weren't so clear. So I I looked at Lakewood and and Shaker. And then there's also a model city charter, which describes budgeting as well. So I looked at that as a third source, all right? And taking all that into account, and to be honest with you, weighing pretty heavily the fact that everybody praised the twenty twenty three process. And that twenty twenty three process actually was consistent with, for the most part, what Lakewood does, what Shaker Heights does and all, okay? So then I took that, and then the next decision was, well, how specific do we want to be here? Because you could just say, do a budget. Or you could say, and you could get much more detail than what we had proposed here. You know, you have, you do this, and this is the way you do it, and all the rest of it. But what we settled on was something, again, pretty similar to what South Yucle and and Lakewood and Shaker Heights has, which is a description of what needs to be compiled and shared, all right? Without really being specific about what has to be done in this way or that way or whatever. But just what information is being made available in a timely manner so that someone can do the budget? And that pretty much is what, that's the way I would describe what we did, what we did. And then if you want to look at the details of what we did in terms of what was recommended, that would be the next, the next thing to look at. But that's how we got here.
That's a good one.
Any questions on that?
So I do recall this council. I do recall this council, you know, basically strongly suggests, again, new guy in council here. That the twenty twenty-four, twenty, I'm sorry, the twenty twenty-five budget process really needs to mimic the twenty twenty-four budget process. When you said the twenty twenty-three.
In twenty twenty-three, they, you prepared your twenty twenty-four budget, in twenty twenty-four, you're preparing your twenty-five.
Exactly, so, not this year, but the prior year, you know, things ran pretty smoothly.
Yes.
So, you know, just, things are not going very smoothly with with this whole budget process this year. You know, right, wrong, right, differ, so now that, if this charter was in effect, or would you make additional changes to this? Or should additional changes be reviewed, just in light of what's happened this year with the budget? Or or or, I mean, I'm not, I'm asking this not from the specific of the Charter Review Commission, because they don't exist.
I was gonna say, please.
But with what you know and your expertise.
My reflections, and my reflections on what we recommended. And then what I've seen, and I have not been a hundred percent attending all the, but I've been informed, Tony has shared, I have attended a couple of meetings, et cetera, watched their meetings, et cetera. I don't suggest there be any changes to this, I don't have it, nothing comes to my mind to say we can make this better because of it.
Does it make it? I'm gonna put words in your mouth. This this is stronger than the language that we have currently.
Currently, well, currently, the description is irrelevant, because nobody follows it.
Yes, that's true.
And and it's far less, yes, it is, it's it's something paragraphs is far less, it's far less detailed, even if you wanted to do it.
Yeah, but there's but there's wording in here, if I can quickly find it, this is like, uh. As council may from time to time require, so such information will be furnished in detail for each department in such a form as the city council may from time to time require, so I read into that, if if city council says this is not in the form that we need it in. It needs to be an X as opposed to Y, you know, we would, we would get hopefully what what we're looking for. I mean, that maybe is ambiguous, but it's also gives city council very, very good. We will run to get something that is what's left out, or you presumably be needed. Or if someone wants to make an investment in the city and a particular department. The mayor's office or department wants to make some investment, and we need some additional paper for that. We'd be able to get schedules and paper by just asking for it. I mean, does this provide that that level of? Ability for us to do that?
Well, I believe that, and then, and section, and nine point three. It speaks about the last paragraph, the first paragraph, last sentence, it says, the content of the annual budget that we shall be following. All right, but it doesn't say it is limited to the following. So if you wanted it to have something other than what is here, this is like a skeleton of what is, you know, what you would need to do a budget. But if you want more than that, it's, there's nothing to stop you from asking for.
I mean, at at some point, we need to look at the flexibility of doing something by ordinance if we need to, I. I think council needs to make clear, I said this at a previous council meeting, at a previous committee of the whole meeting. We owe it to the administration to let them know what it is we need. Now, that that doesn't necessarily codify anything, but what we need to make a decision on the budget, you know. October, November financials, whatever that is. We we could move the date, based on the language we have now, we can move the date of the budget materials up. Can't make it later, but we can make it earlier. Now, there may be some things we want that, you you know, that you don't wanna codify. But, you know, we're saying as a council, this is what we need, and there are provisions. I I don't know about in this, but in the current language in article nine, that that allow council some authority to get information.
Well, so currently, it says, and I missed a part of your comments, I believe, but I think this gets to what you were speaking to. Uh, this is the second paragraph of our current article nine, section one, says such annual budget shall set for specifically such items may be required by general law or ordinance of the council. Which you could merge into the the approach that's outlined here, I think, pretty easily, for the reason that you mentioned, that it says including.
We want that, I I mean, for sure.
It's very fascinating to me that so much of what you built in here, the commission built in here, would have helped us this year. So thank you.
No, it's ridiculous.
Okay, so if I may respond, Tara Schuster, who I met with, and I learned a great deal from Tara. I mean, I, from my impression of Tara, I I would say that she one hundred percent would have been committed to following this process if there were, if she could have followed the process. So I I don't think that there was any change of mind saying, well, well, we we did that last time, we don't have to do it this time.
No, but it's good to, this is what we're here for, to put this in writing, so that the guidelines, and then it's up to us to bring it up at the proper time, you know, the law. We always have the law director here to say, wait a minute, you know, isn't this true? You know, and point two, you know, whatever it is, so I'm glad it's in there, since it's just a couple minutes, I mean, this is a whole discussion, I think, that we wanna have, you know, like, not broken up by lunch or anything. Why don't we, why don't we reconvene at one o'clock? And we'll, is that okay with everybody, we'll just reconvene at one o'clock, and we'll really dive into nine. So, we're taking a recess, a one-hour recess till one P M. All right, welcome back, we are, have a special committee of the whole meeting discussing the charter. And we've discussed the portion of the charter that is subject to the council and the mayor, and now we're on finance, article nine, section one. So, or actually, we're on section two, I believe.
You did that.
I think we did.
No change.
Yeah, there was.
So, Mr. President.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that I was on the verge of saying before we we broke for lunch. Is this November fifteenth date in all these sections? And you were interested in changing some legislation, I think you were gonna try to do it through legislation. I mean, does it make sense for us to change this November fifteenth date in this document to an earlier date?
Well, I don't think we can change the date that the state, the state prescribed deadline. We could do it, you know, by ordinance, because it says honor before November fifteenth, but the Ohio revised code does say November fifteenth. But allows municipalities through their home rules to, for us to go before, so I think we'd have to do it by ordinance. But I'll ask the law director if you could codify that in a in a charter.
The law director is going to say that we can take this under advisement. I'm looking back at the first sentence of section nine point two, council shall adopt, et cetera, et cetera, in compliance with the general laws of the state. And then you get to the last sentence, which includes the November fifteenth deadline. My instinct is that this could be made to provide for council to adopt a, an earlier deadline. I think it's probably not the case that you could do it later, but I can look into that and advise you more fully.
I mean, I'm fine with an ordinance, just because I wouldn't wanna handcuff another council. That might find that that, you know, whatever we choose is not really the best for the government at that time. But I didn't wanna ask the law director, the kind of middle sentence in nine point two. It says, prior to December thirty-first of each fiscal year, the city must adopt a revised budget, does that? Does that, would that possibly, that language stop a temporary budget from being adopted? Oh, cuz that is a budget, I guess.
It doesn't say annual, right?
Yeah, okay.
Right, so my, again, I can look at that also and bake it in, but I don't think it precludes that.
I just don't want anybody to say, you know, this should never be a god, or, you know, any council's head on that, just cuz, as we found out, things happen.
Well, there's, if I might, and there's been debate this year about whether it was appropriate for council to adopt a quarterly budget or not. But you could certainly imagine circumstances where there couldn't even be any debate, and something could happen where you weren't in a position to. You know, where you clearly and unequivocally aren't in a position to do an annual budget, should be unlikely and rare. But this doesn't say annual, so I don't think that it would preclude that, but we can look at that further.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that the flexibility of all we hear, if the standards aren't met by the administration. Okay, anything else on nine point two? Then we'll go to nine point three, preparation and adoption of the city budget. Quite a few changes here, and it is a longer, this is quite a long section. Katie, can you talk about section A and why you crossed out that, all that stuff, and then just left it real kind of simple?
Under nine point three?
Yes.
I would suggest that the cross-out stuff, it's really gonna be confusing to look at the cross-out stuff, because what's in here now is so different. You really should just look at the new text, what do you think, Katie?
Yes, because part of it, sometimes, sometimes the, like, the description of the county estimates appeared in, appears in the existing, but here someplace else here, so it looks like it's crossed out.
I see.
And to respond to, just in general, in terms of your question, when we wrote this and when we adopted this, we wanted to adopt something which was clear enough, but flexible enough, that it didn't provide necessary requirements and constraints unnecessarily. So in A, for example, that in the twenty twenty-three, in the twenty twenty-four, with the twenty twenty-four budget. The mayor had prepared a statement, like, which is being described, a message, right? And we were trying, what we adopted was that that message is a good part of your delivery from the executive branch to the legislative branch. So you should, you should have a message like that, just a place to talk about it. But other than that, we didn't need to get into any details.
Is there a reason you don't want it as maybe required by council, just that, that phrase in letter A?
I I believe, cuz somewhere, I don't know where it is, right? Somewhere here, we generally generally just say, this is, the council should do what they want with the specifics. But I'm not, I can look, I can try to find that, so we didn't want to say it everywhere. That makes sense.
Well, and and earlier, there was discussion about the first paragraph of section nine point three. And the potential merging in of the current first sentence of the of article nine, section one. Providing such materials as may be required by council, by ordinance.
Is that covered by the last paragraph of nine? Three E, councils shall provide by ordinance the procedures for administration, and if I do share you oversight of the budget.
Probably is, yeah. And that places an obligation upon council to to do that, rather than just permitting council to make specifications. I suppose if you didn't, that would be what you had prescribed. I think that, I think that react, that responds to the question about striking some of that language from, and I do think, to Linda's point, the red line is harder to follow, because it's so new.
Yeah.
I don't happen to have a clean copy with me, but maybe that you wanna review a clean copy.
Just to point out, um, what is in B, the last sentence does include the November fifteenth date again.
Yes, yeah.
And it's not, it's it's specifically November fifteenth, not honor before.
Oh.
Well, it's by.
Okay, you're right, you're right. Although. This still bothers me.
What do you think it should be?
Twelve before.
Honor before. I I just don't, yeah, I don't, let's not change that, let, you know, let's let's leave it as honor before.
Cuz we can still do individual, each year, schedule. Collaboration of leadership with the administration determines when the budget will be provided to council.
Yeah. But when you say by November fifteenth, and then if we did an ordinance, and we said, we want it by November first, then you each have two
Yes.
languages that say the same thing, says honor before, you go, okay, well then.
Oh, I see.
And you can't, you know, it's.
Yeah, that's what I see.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's nitpicky.
Oh, that's, that's why you do the nitpicky stuff here. All right, I mean, I'm all ears. To anything anybody wants to bring up on nine point three. Yeah, letter C, by the way, the last sentence of the first paragraph has the same.
Yeah.
By the November fifteenth, and so, yeah, go ahead.
I think for future budget years, this all makes a lot of sense, I'm not sure that we will have the staff in place for twenty twenty-six to be able to ask for all this information, I'm just putting that out there.
What do you mean?
And the, the election won't have occurred anyway until November, right? So people haven't had a chance to vote on it in November.
Right.
But I would also say to keep in mind, all the things that they've put, the commission has put in here, are substantively important to what we're doing.
Agreed, well, um, Director Hannah, when would this go into effect, let's just say people voted in the affirmative on November fourth? How does that work?
I think the amendment says January one of the next year, but I'm working on memory.
And if, and if that's the case, then that's when it would take effect, and if there's no date specified, it's effective upon adoption.
So, Gail, are you saying this would be an adjustment, and there would need to be some period of time for the administration, or no?
No, I'm just thinking about what we're going to right now, and for, if the finance department is completely staffed, like we would like it to be. And they're functioning on all cylinders, then this information request would not be unrealistic, I just wanna make sure that we know going into budget season, as a C O D A, what the realistic capacity is.
I think to that point, though, if you did want to avoid this going into effect immediately, if it did get voted on in the affirmative, to do the January one twenty twenty-six date, effective date. Because then they wouldn't have to do this next year, then a matter of months of this passing potentially.
Yeah, the last sentence does have it take effect January one.
Oh, that's good.
I didn't see that, but that's just very.
It's the very last.
It's just because it's just, it's a very end of this bucket. And the entire bucket. Bucket one, yeah. Gotcha, okay.
My law on charter amendments is baked into section thirteen point. I remember law and charter amendments is baked into section thirteen point two as well. Saying essentially if there's a date specified, that's when it becomes effective, and otherwise it's effective upon the certification of the election results.
Yeah, so you could selectively say certain things come into effect. You know, immediately upon the election being certified or whatever the right wording is for that, but otherwise it's January one of the next year.
So let me ask you something about the, I'm down to, uh, letter E under nine point three. Um, when it says that the budget, but, you know, by publishing and holding hearings on the budget. Publishing means to make available to the council and the public. So, for instance, the budget book didn't get published until January of this year. Is it considered published if? I don't know, if it's shown on a screen to council during a meeting? I mean, is that published? I don't, I guess I don't know what published means exactly.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, um, where are you looking?
Uh, E, uh, so I'm looking at the sentence that says.
Okay. Uh, made available to the council and the public.
Pub, well, publishing means to make available to the council and the public, so.
Doesn't necessarily mean, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be posted somewhere. It just needs to be available with someone.
So is it available if it's, if it's shown in a slide presentation?
Was it in a packet?
Right.
Right, and then a packet that was available with the meeting materials?
Yeah, but, but I'm talking about to the public. I understand if we could.
Where the public has access to that.
It's a handout.
Right, but this is, this is for, for.
Future.
Starting in twenty twenty six.
I don't think, um, anything was, uh, printed for the public.
Well, I would think in the interest of transparency, if a budget book is presented, it should be posted straight up for the public to see it.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is my opinion on transparency.
Yeah.
I guess, I, I mean, it, it, this did not happen by that day, this, this past year. It, it did not happen, so. I guess my question is, I just don't want.
This is new language though, right?
I, I understand that, but what I guess I'm saying is, is like. I, I don't know, is publishing, again, does, that's just.
So I don't know what, uh, making available to the council and the public in the contemporary means of information sharing means. It can be construed probably as meaning different things. I think it's correct that if it were in a packet, that would be available to the public, you know, by a contemporary means. If it seems important to council to, um, require that it's posted on the website, I think I would just say that. Um, and you can, you can build in some, you know, alternatives and, and so forth, or such other means as approved by council, what have you, but.
Yeah, I think the website, I like, I, I don't.
Cuz we said.
I mean, is it bad to put something that's specific in the?
No, we put in our, or we put in our resolutions of ordinances, huh?
I mean.
Yeah, but I'm talking about in the charter.
When we transfer to chips in our head, you can.
Abandon it.
Are we all cool and like websites should be part of this?
Yes.
Well, yeah, by, by publishing.
By ordinance, cuz that's the method of, of transmitting it to people will change.
Yeah, so by publishing on the city's website or other means is determined by ordinance or words of that effect. And then following and hold hearings on the budget, you can wordsmith that.
That allows for us having chips in our head.
Please don't talk that way.
You've got at least eighteen months.
Thanks.
I can say Elon's on the job.
Oh, God.
Please don't, no.
If, if you put that in, it could be necessary to define what publishing.
Probably not, but.
No, I don't think so.
No, I, that was just a question. That wasn't like I didn't really want a definition put in. I just wanted to know if it covered website, go ahead.
That will do it, what Craig discusses.
Yeah.
So the last sentence here, I want, what I wanna do is clarify what I recall is our intention.
Which last sentence?
Last sentence, council shall provide by ordinance the procedures for administration fiduciary oversight of the budget. All right, so yes, I think it covers that question of ordinance will cover this budget process and all, all right? But this was intended, by my recall, to be, to correspond to what we put into the charter concerning the mayor. That if council says, you know, passes ordinances and expecting you to do X Y Z, you as mayor will do X Y Z. That's, that's in the mayor's section, in the same way here, that if council approves a budget to do certain things that the mayor is asking to accomplish, then this sentence says the council's gonna do that, right? You, you, you see, it's, it's always, I don't know if that makes sense, but it corresponds, it says that if the mayor's been given the authority and the money to do something by council, there, he's expected to do it, or he or she's expected to do it, in the same way that if, if the, if the mayor has come with a budget and council has approved that budget, then council will take the necessary action to make what's in that budget real, if that makes sense.
And that's similar to what's in the current provision, just worded somewhat differently. I think the distinction is, to my knowledge, council has not done that, certainly not recently, adopted an ordinance setting towards some of these administrative, you know, steps and procedures. And this places a duty on council to do that. And then I would agree that's consistent with rest of the charter as well.
Anything else on this? Nine point three? So next is nine point four appropriation. I have no notes on this. So. Further the rest of you.
Nothing. I'd like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I like the second sentence in the first paragraph under nine point four. The appropriations and the ordinance may not exceed the estimated revenues of the city for that year. That's a really important statement.
Well, then that would have made the initial budget a, a no-go, right?
I, I believe that's in the current language.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the current language.
You know, I, okay, I mean, I, I do agree with this and I know that, uh. You know, we don't wanna get into a long thing about what deficit spending is, but, but, um. You know, obviously, the administration can always come back with budget adjustments and spend out of the, you know, unencumbered funds or the reserves, if you will.
And the current language is that upon receipt of the estimate, council shall at once prepare the appropriation ordinance, yada yada. As prescribed by general ordinance resolution, using the mayor's estimate as basis, and such appropriations shall not exceed the estimated revenues of the municipality.
See, the, the one thing that happened that gives me pause, and not, not so much about this language, I think the language is good. But, you know, in that December thirtieth meeting that we had, where the mayor said, I, basically what he did was he reestimated expenditures, not revenues, expenditures. I mean. You know, you, you know where I'm going with this?
I know where you're going with this.
I, I know the public is watching and I don't expect anybody to be able to read my, my mind, but the, the thing is, is that if, if all you have to do is say, well, actually, now that I think about it, it's not this number, it's that number. I mean. That's another way of skirting this, the spirit of this, um, entry into the amendment, yes.
Slightly different point, but I, I'm, I'm wondering, given what has happened. Where we have a temporary budget being proposed, et cetera. Whether the language that's in this draft, which talks about, um, the budget being adopted prior to December thirty first, needs to be tweaked. And whether also the language in nine point four needs to be reviewed to reflect this notion of doing a temporary budget as long as you're in accordance with Ohio law. Because I think there's, um. You know, there's provision here in nine point four for an interim appropriation. But in such event, an annual appropriation ordinance shall be adopted such that the city complies with the general laws of Ohio. So this, this seems to me, as I'm looking at it today, not quite consistent with that December thirty one deadline that we had put in the earlier provision. So I think those two things need to be synced up with the flexibility that's provided under Ohio law, which permits a, a city council to adopt a temporary budget as long as they have, you know, their budget act in order by the end of the first quarter or whatever the deadline is. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it's the end of March, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't disagree, and I, you know, that's a note that I made was to sort of look at this, you know, in, as I said earlier, with the clean language. And look at the first meeting of the year versus December thirty first. Sync up and make sure that all of these other pieces are consistent, as Linda said. I don't see anything that seems hugely off here, but I do think there's a question about whether all the pieces, you know, tie together completely. But that should be not a huge issue to, to overcome. I, I would also say that with regard to the, um. The reduction of estimated expenditures, I don't think that that's, um. The reduction of estimated expenditures, I don't think that that's, um.
Put some guardrails on this, on when it is expected that this would be done.
I think, I think that does it.
I mean, I think that's the.
Yeah.
I think that's the big takeaway.
Yeah.
I would add to that, that we need, as council, need to stay aware of the status of like coming into May of this year. One of us, somebody needs to be asking, have the correct unaudited forms and financial statements been submitted to the auditor? We didn't start asking that question until a little later, when Director Schuster implied that she wanted to have that done in order for it to be properly. So it wasn't timely on our part. I'm just saying in terms of our responsibility for oversight.
All right, uh, eleven point one, um. Let's see how we can get it here. You got another hour and fifteen minutes. Um, maybe we can get through. What I'd like to do is do eleven, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Let's see how it goes. So this is all about boards and commissions. We also have committees. What do we want to, we want to have at word?
Probably should.
So, so let's add, let's do boards, comma, commit, commissions, and committees.
What is it you want for committees?
Well.
Like council committees?
No, we have some citizens, if, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, no, citizen advisory committee.
Yeah, we have some citizens advisory committees. If you, if you were to ask me under what circumstances if we used a committee versus a commission, I, oh, I'm not sure I could tell you. I, I mean, now they're sort of interchangeable to some extent.
Well, I mean, the question is, do we want the committees under the same rules as the boards and commissions? I guess that's the first question. And if so, then we add it.
Has counsel's intention been that the committees will function in a way that's different than a board or a commission?
I mean.
I, I'm, I'm asking in part because that, it may be worth looking at the use of the nomenclature and whether it's important to continue that or whether there's our benefits to sort of cleaning it up.
Craig, this is your domain.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I briefly looked at it. We talked about it. We had all of the boards and chairs were in. Legally, I don't think it carries the significance that it, that it, at one time, I know I looked at the definition of what was the difference between a, a, a board and a committee. I, I, I don't know. So we, we would have, we would have to change the name of our.
Yeah.
Um, like our transportation and mobility.
Advisory.
Committee. Yeah, I, I don't think it's worth.
And I, I think you were, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think you, uh, would want to reserve somewhere and it's, you certainly have this for council committees and I believe it exists elsewhere for non-council committees, the ability to form these advisory groups or ad hoc committees or special purpose committees, et cetera. But I, I think that's something that you, that some analysis can be performed about and council can take this up again when it gets ready to finalize the handoff.
Why not?
What, what I, what I don't know, I have no grounding in this is, it seems to me that the commissions that are identified in the charter have some pretty specific responsibilities that are, um, a little more fundamental than some of these committees, which are functioning, as I understand it, more in an advisory capacity.
Absolutely.
So that may be the distinction for when it should be in the charter versus, you know, perhaps have a different structure that's established by ordinance. But I've just exhausted all my thinking on this.
But we, but commissions have quasi judicial powers, but boards don't, right?
Not, not all commissions do, I don't think.
Right, not all, right, but the one, but some do.
But this is, this is similar, correct, to the treatment that's currently found in the, in the charter?
Yes, I think that the thing that changed here is that we just changed the way it was presented a smidge and there was an expansion of the, uh, scope of the, the responsibilities of the civil service commission to include the, uh, advice on salaries.
Right, but, but so planning commission and civil service commission are currently and would remain as this is, um, proposed the only commission established by the charter.
True.
Yeah, so I, which is just to say, I think, we, you know, I haven't reviewed this closely. I didn't know how long we would get by one four, how far we would get by one forty-eight today. I don't think these are huge changes. You certainly would, would not, and I would suggest, could not allow council to dissolve a commission created by charter until the voters signed off on it. So I think that language is perfectly appropriate. Beyond that, I think it's up to council how much or little you may want to tweak this.
Craig, any thoughts?
Let me look at this again, um.
See, the problem is there's some really specific language in here that doesn't really apply to committees.
Then it's.
No, it's not that it doesn't apply, it's not relevant. It could apply.
All right, uh, Ken, where, where are we looking at here?
Well, I'm looking at, I'm still at eleven point one. No, no, I'm sorry, I was looking at eleven point two.
Which is limited to city planning commission.
Yeah.
And eleven three.
It specifically applies to those two.
Those two only, yeah.
They have very specific responsibilities.
As does the civil service commission.
Yeah.
Well, what, what, what would be the harm in, uh, adding to eleven point one committee?
Interesting.
Council may.
Yeah.
Combine or abolish, well, wait a second, or any other boards. Council may establish by ordinance any other boards, committees.
Commission or committee, committee or commission.
Right.
Except.
As it may be necessary. And then they can, can combine or abolish. Now, what I don't know, is there a similar provision right now in our, uh, council that gives us that a power? I don't recall that, but committees, no, those are council committees.
In one eleven.
Yeah.
But under the administrative.
Listen, Kuda.
Go ahead.
Counselor Cobb, do you, how do you feel about having, not feel, how do you think including the word committees would hamper or, um, enhance what we've gone through in the last year or so, adding or, you know, formulating those two committees that we worked on so hard? Should it be in the charter, I guess is what I'm asking. Or should be, like, we were able to do that because we didn't have any charter guidelines?
Well, in, in chapter eleven, it only speaks of council committees, that being committees of subcommittees of council. And there is no, I don't recall being able to find anything that authorized us to do what we're doing in terms of establishing it. So maybe it would be a good idea to have a charter provision that makes it clear that we do have the ability to establish these.
Understood.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to look at. Um, I would just throw out there as well in scrolling through some of the list of the city's existing public bodies, it's a long list. Um, council might also want to undertake a, a look, not related to charter changes necessarily, but at, you know, whether, what, again, like, what's the meaning of a committee? Are these permanent things? Are they temporary? Are they special assignment? Charter review commission was a commission created by charter or that can be created by council pursuant to charter for a limited purpose. You have a, a large list. We ran out of room in the codified chapters and had to start being created with numbering. So I'm just saying, you know, think about the use of these different public bodies, is what I'm suggesting. Which doesn't change the, the law department's homework, looking at some of these other questions.
And let me back up. I, I, I think the place to put council's ability to do that is, is in, uh, chapter one eleven.
That, that could make sense.
Well, we can talk about that.
Well, you know what, I, I, I actually, I actually have a provision drafted for one eleven previously. It breaks it down into A and B.
So, I'm sorry, are you, just so I understand what you're saying, do this in one eleven and not in the charter? The, uh, the co, uh, committees.
Would, would there be a conflict in doing that in chapter one eleven of the codified ordinances? I don't think that would conflict with what's, with what's here in this proposed new charter.
So then you're saying add committee?
It certainly could not hurt. And when, and if we put it in the charter, then we wouldn't need it.
In.
Yeah, and in, and in ordinance, but as long, we could put it in the ordinance as long as it doesn't conflict with the charter. Is that right?
Well, right now, you're, this reaches combinations or abolishment of boards or commissions. You're speaking about establishment, uh, to an extent that is currently not called out.
I mean, the thing is, in one eleven, we may want to make some uniform ordinances. I mean, a uniform ord, an ordinance that makes uniform rules for committees, for instance. Not saying we'll do it, I'm just saying, we might want to do it.
You guys are forgetting task forces too.
I think the consensus when we had the meeting, we're getting off track here. So what it, what it was, that they didn't, each one was so unique, they didn't, they didn't want to be bound by a general set. That was the consensus from the meeting.
I'm not saying that we should do it. I'm saying we probably want the flexibility to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so along the lines of may not be entirely relevant to the charter, but there's a conversation at one point I'd like to have with council about our current makeup of council committees. Are these in the charter?
No.
Or this is, can be completely outside? So we could have that conversation and let, in parallel to these.
That's only covered in chapter one eleven.
Okay.
So, if I could to move on, what, would there be any harm in our adding,
Council.
Uh, committee to this proposed, uh, eleven point one?
I, I don't think so. Um, but again, we'll look at that and I think there's a related question, which is, do you want to make sure that the language is sufficiently flexible to address any questions that could come up as they have today about task forces, advisory groups, et cetera?
Well, we, going forward, we would just.
Would you though?
We would have to change, you know, call it, uh, uh, you know, we could establish a, a committee with an expiration date on it or something like that. So it's not, it's a temporary committee. But I don't know that we need to be empowered by the charter to be able to establish a task force.
No, I think you have that, that authority through the adoption of legislation, which is how it's done.
Yep.
Cause I think the mayor may have established some advisory thing that's not mentioned anywhere in our, uh, ordinances. What's to stop the mayor from saying, I, I want an advisory task force?
Right, I don't know that it's necessary, but I think you could think about it in connection with this language, which kind of reaches other boards or commissions. And I think the most important part of this in some respects is you can't combine or abolish planning and civil service. And, and, and all of those, however created, if they have a specific public assignment, are public bodies, which, you know, are subject to all of those more onerous rules than a lot of people are accustomed to.
So I'm okay with this wording as we, what was just said, but during talking about that. We've just, we've covered what we establish are two extremely different, extremely important commissions, the civil service commission and, city planning commission. And in one eleven, we do what we need to do in order to give us the ability to formulate as, as things evolve, appropriate committees and task forces. Can we strengthen one eleven then?
We will, I guess you could call it strengthened. We will elaborate upon one eleven, which right now is just limited to, uh, uh, council committees. And in the short term, it, it should get amended because what if this charter provision doesn't pass, then we want to wait. And there is a committee or task force that we may want to have formed before the election.
Possible.
Details to be forthcoming.
To be, to be.
All right, um, eleven point, um, three. Oh, sorry, we kind of, kind of did that, right? I mean, we're kind of talking about eleven point two, eleven point three. I mean. So, under the civil service commission, letter C, why did we cross out civil service?
It's all the civil service. For your sake.
Oh, okay.
Refers back to.
Just the redundancy, okay. Got it.
D is all new though.
All right, you want to go to, uh, anything else on eleven? So let's go to fourteen, which is charter review.
Can I, can I ask, um, a quick question? I'm sorry. So council, um, I guess the question I was gonna ask is, does council want to, uh, assign this responsibility to the civil service commission, but maybe the predecessor, um, issue is, I don't know what was in, this is a big change. And that's why I'm asking. I don't know what the.
It's an expansion of the jurisdiction of the civil service commission. And as we noted in our report, the current members of the commission expressed some reservations about whether they had sufficient people on the commission to handle this. So if you do want them to get involved in the salary recommendations, you may have to consider adding some folks to that commission. And it may require slightly different preferred expertise among those people.
Do we just empower them to, um, or empower the city to hire someone to assist them to do?
You could, you could, and, and, you know, allow a consultant to assist them. I think that's what typically happens anyway.
Right, and which case you, you shouldn't need to expand the board.
And do you give them that authority? Council could do this, right? Is, that's, I'm not certain what the, this is the only reason I wanted to, I know it received attention from the commission. I just don't know all the ins and outs of it, except for what Linda just related.
I don't know. I don't have a specific opinion on that.
I mean, at the end of the process, for adjusting any of these based upon the charter and general law, council has to adopt legislation to modify the salaries. There's no other way for that to happen. So this is a, a precursor step, sort of in the run up to determining whether you adopt legislation and what that legislation says. And with that, I'm done. I just wanted to throw it out there for, for discussion.
I don't think, I don't think in the prior discussion, council had wrapped up decisions on the sections related to salary adjustments. I think you left some open issues there. And I do want to emphasize that none of the elected officials who came to talk to us raised the issue of salary increases. This was something that was initiated by the commission because we learned that it had been quite a long time since, since council salaries have been adjusted, like maybe literally twenty years. And that the, the mayor's salary has been set initially, but I don't believe there really is a provision in the charter for it to change ever. And I don't think that's good government. So it seems to me that it's reasonable to have some provision for adjustments periodically, at least consideration of adjustments to salaries of our mayor and our city council members. Because otherwise, how do you possibly expect people to take on these responsibilities? I know people aren't doing it for the money.
So, so there is a provision for, um, adjustment of, um, officers and employees accepted, you know, in article.
Yeah, you grab legislation.
Five, section four, um, that would authorize council to adjust, um, compensation. But what there isn't is any reference to a regular review, um, or a process. It's just authority sitting there. And as a result, here and in many other communities, I think you see long periods of time go by where there's no adjustment made.
So just one point, what, what is proposed here is that there is a review and there's a recommendation by the commission and for consideration by council, period. In the city of Lakewood, they have a, they have a similar provision in their civil service, in the civil service commission, where their recommendations become law unless council intervenes to change it. So we were, we've taken a less aggressive approach here, feeling it was appropriate for our city. Just to make it, just to offer that additional information and a distinction.
So that complies with the purpose of a charter is to give the authority, but not necessarily, um, as we've found that the salaries for mayor and, well, for council haven't been reviewed for a long time. And so apparently you have flexibility in there. I don't, I don't think we need to put in wording that says must do it every two years or yada, yada. So, um, I think we're just looking for that authority that it can be done, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, that what can be done, I'm sorry.
Well, this D, the whole, the whole establishment of a process, D, does not have to be done every so often.
It requires the review to be done every four years.
Yeah.
And the council, every four years has to consider it. The council does not have to make any changes.
There you go, sorry.
The mayor's current salary, that's in an ordinance, right?
I didn't.
Did we put that salary, I'm sorry?
No.
Did we just, we just put the mayor's salary as part of the general salary ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what happened?
Elected officials.
Okay, so we would have done that prior.
So, yeah, it was done prior to the election.
Okay.
Um, and then it's, it's just appeared in the salary ordinances since that time. And I think in the first year after that, that, that legislation was adopted, there was a, a line for city manager and a line for mayor with a, an asterisk in it.
Okay. So that would have been in twenty twenty-one?
I don't know, I wasn't here.
That would have been the salary ordinance we passed in twenty twenty-one. I think you were on council.
Yeah. No, I was, um, I was charged with a group of people to come up with.
A salary.
A salary, uh, recommendation. But I was not.
Oh, that's right, all right. The election was in twenty twenty-one.
So the, yeah, the timing provision on that was that council would set the salary of the mayor for the two-year period commencing on January one of the second year. I did not write this, following the year that this section shall become effective. Uh, provided that any such ordinance must be adopted at least sixty days prior to the filing date for the regular municipal election to be held in the year of adoption. And provided for, sorry, sorry. So I can pull up that ordinance.
I think, I think President Kuda drafted that before he was on council. That sounds like some delusion.
But, but, but it does not, you know, to, to the point made earlier, it doesn't then say from, that's on, you know, adjustments shall be made, yada, yada. It's just, that's it. It says, these, these steps have to be taken. Then one step has to be taken, another step could be taken, and after that, you're just under the charter.
Yeah, and I think the charter commission felt that, you know, we have, we have heard that we've got some issues with hiring people because our salaries are lagging. And, you know, none of us wants the city to be spending money like it's going out of style. But at the same time, you know, we recognize that over time, um, there is a lot of benefit to the city to having the compensation that's paid to all level of employees, including elected officials, be adjusted. And that, that maybe it's a good discipline to say that council has to consider it. Not that they have to do it, but they have to consider it. And I'm not really worried about them going overboard on it because they still have to face the voters. So I don't think they're gonna start being free and easy with throwing around increases. But we realize you work hard.
This was that council member Sarin's legislation.
To do what?
Uh, that salary schedule that we passed in twenty twenty-one. Little did we know.
Well, the salary schedule passed in the spring, like the general salaries.
Yeah.
Cause there was also a freestanding piece of legislation.
I think so.
Find that, but it's here right now.
I can tell you that the charge came from, uh, the then council president, sorry, blanking out, Jason Stein. All right, what do we want to do here?
Well, I think we're up to, if you're done with that part, we're up to charter review.
Charter review fourteen.
But I don't know if you're done with it.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Are we doing anything with it? Are we still?
I think we know what the questions are. Do we do a consensus on the answers?
I'm okay with it, the way it is.
The way it is in here, the way.
As written.
As recommended by the commission.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
Jim Patress, you have a, a way yet on this?
No particular thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I take your time. No, I asked you a question a little bit. I thought you were just.
I, well, I was still looking for it, but.
I mean, just generally speaking, I agree with what was brought up by the charter review commission that we have to go through the exercise of considering it, but don't have to vote for it.
Yeah.
I support that idea.
A regular, every four-year review. Makes sense.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
Wait, which, which section are you looking at now?
That was in thirteen. D.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Like, I think we're making about fifteen cents an hour now. So if we, let's say we bump it up to twenty. You know, is there gonna be an outrage? I don't think so.
I don't know, that's a pretty dramatic increase.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's a, it's a thirty-three percent or, is it a twenty-five percent? It's maybe thirty-three of the, to teach or leave. Yeah, well, I'm not a math teacher. All right. So everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so a lot, uh, fourteen, uh, and we still have, uh, fifteen and sixteen. Fourteen, God knows, we talked about this, uh, a couple of years ago. This is about charter review. The council shall, at least once every ten years, and this is another kind of one of those provisions where you don't have to change the charter, but you gotta look at it. This time it's every ten years. Uh, by ordinance or resolution, appoint a charter review commission, first ten year period shall. commence, blah, blah, blah. So first of all, is it every ten years? Everybody okay with the every ten year thing? It's standard, right?
At least once, at least once every ten years.
Right, but so obviously you could do it every year if you want.
Pretty typical provision, yeah.
Yeah, but ten is, um, and, you know, the question is, do you, you know, this is done by ordinance.
Or resolution.
Resolution. And, um, you know, I, I mean, I'd made my, my thoughts about this pretty clear. I mean, if it were up to me, I would codify the, in, in, in the charter, uh, a number, I don't know if I put a number, but, uh, I don't think the mayor's picks on a charter review commission should outweigh anybody on a, on a, we're all legislating. In, in this regard, when we're performing this task, we are all acting as legislators. That's my view. Cause, cause everything that goes into a charter is, has the weight of law. These, this is lawmaking. You know, clearly in the purview of all eight elected officials. Now, obviously, we could keep doing it, or, not we, councils can keep doing this, um, a, a, as need be, right? In an ord, in an ordinance that enacts a charter review commission. You know, they can hash it out every time. So that, those are the, those are the two choices as I see them. You know, let each council hash it out when they're doing, when they're impaneling a charter review commission, or put something in the charter that fixes.
So are you saying the wording that the commission, charter review commission has recommended, doesn't fix what you see is, was a problem when we were recruiting for the charter?
Well, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't fix a number, and it doesn't fit, which maybe you don't want to do. And it doesn't fix, first of all, who, yeah, who appoints? Like, you know, and I understand, I've looked, Bill Hannah supplied us with probably a dozen, uh, examples, this before you and the two gyms were on. And, you know, I, I see what other people do. I also see that if you, um, I, I didn't like the, the impaneling thing at all, not one single bit. I didn't like the order it happened. I, I think it, I think the way we did it invited mischief. I actually think it said mischief, come on in, because we didn't know who had to come up with, uh, the, uh, commission members first. And, you know, the way I looked at it, I'm just gonna be blunt about it, the way I looked at it, if, if, if there's twenty people that apply, okay, and you're gonna, and you, you, you two, the two gyms should listen to this very carefully, there are twenty people that apply. And, and that's the pool of people that are going to be on the charter review commission. Let's just say it's gonna be nine members. And council puts for their, their, their nominees first, you know? We could be picking people that the mayor was gonna pick, and then the mayor picks, let's, if, let's say it's five people for council and four people for the mayor, we could pick people just not knowing what the mayor's thinking, and pick some of his or her, you know, to be choices. And then the mayor gets four more picks. I, I don't like that. I don't like that that could happen. Because it, it skews the lawmaking towards one elected official out of the eight that are empowered to do it, to, to impanel a charter review commission. I, I see you squinting, and I kinda know why, because you're hearing this for the first time, but.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just, I just, no, I just want to hear everything from everybody.
I just wonder if this section is meant to talk about how often council shall, at least once during every tenure period, by ordinance or resolution, appoint a commission.
Right.
That the way that you go about appointing that commission, or who gets what picks, should be in that ordinance or resolution, rather than in the charter.
This is what you did the last time.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's, cause it leaves it open.
Yeah.
And, and my question is, do we want to put anything? Because you could, you could put that same sentence in there, you know, and not to exceed, you know, I mean, you could put something in there that makes sure that there's going to be some kind of balance, or you could just hope that councils do that. And, and I, I understand, there may be councils that think the mayor should, should choose everybody, and then the, uh, and, you know, they do the nomination, and, and the council does the confirmation. But that, that is not how I feel about this. It's not done on the federal level that way, it's not done on the state level that way. And, um, you know, here we are, kinda like with the same dynamic, and it is lawmaking, we are a legislative branch of government, and I'm just saying, I think this is a heck of a place to cede that power. I, I, I really do. But I understand it could be taken care of in a good piece of, uh, in a good, in a good ordinance.
Do you think this proposed, uh, charter amendment doesn't give council the authority to determine?
How it.
No, it's.
Determine the appointment process?
It's wide open, it's wide open.
Well, except you, except, well, except.
Yeah, I kept making that, 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 I kept making that point, and our law director, well, I shouldn't be quoting you in front of you.
How dare you?
But why don't you say your answer to that?
Well, I would say this, hang on. I have any word letters, but.
See, this is when you get into legal, legal, counselor.
I wanted to help you grant provision because I, I do think this.
I remember, there we go.
Hold it, hold it.
This agreement we have, I just don't remember the legality.
Well, listen to, listen to what the law director's about to say, because there was a dipsy-doodle to get around.
I relied on our law.
So, yeah, this is, so this is different. This says council shall appoint by legislation, right?
Right.
I'm on the wrong page. The existing provision, which is what led council to adopt legislation determining that process in the last go-around, which as we all remember is a lot of fun, says council shall, at least during each tenure period, by ordinance or resolution, determine whether to appoint. I think this says appoint, correct?
Yes.
So I think this is actually different. If, if there is thought on council to, uh, including selections for the mayor, um, I would say you should address it now, because that, that really was not the most effective, efficient use of council's time. X number of months ago, whenever that was, so.
It was way too long. I, I agree. I, I'm just saying.
This, this says council shall appoint a commission.
And the other one.
Said council shall determine whether to appoint a commission.
Yeah, and, but I remember the, the, the kind of workaround was, we're still appointing when we're confirming. So if the mayor has, um, he didn't have appointments, he had nominations.
Right.
So, you know, you, you see where this goes? This, this allows for, you know, and maybe you think that's okay, and I'm not suggesting that.
You know, many, many charters split it up. Many charters allow the mayor to appoint the whole thing.
Right.
It's all over the map.
It's all.
You know, and council could, even under this proposed language, uh, when it goes to appoint a commission, say, mayor, we'd like for you to select three of these people, four of these people, whatever, could. We don't know what the number overall is gonna be, that's left up to you.
My question, my question to everybody is, we're, we're a check and balance body, and that's not a question. We are a check and balance body. And the question is, do you want to leave, because the way that happens is in the charter? You know, like, like, you put teeth in that check and balance in the charter and in ordinances, but, you know, if you don't have it in the charter, you can't do it with the ordinances. And I'm just saying, if you leave it to the executive branch, if the executive branch has the most influence on the charter, are you going to get, as a legislative body, are you going to get the desired outcome you want when there's a charter review? And my answer is, if the mayor dominates the charter review process, I have a big question mark there. I have less of a question mark if the council dominates that process. That's, that's where I'm at, yeah.
So what's your recommended wording?
Well, something that limits the, well, I don't know, if, first of all, let me get to that, because I want to answer that, but are you saying that this language only allows council to make the appointments?
Yes. But it, but it doesn't mean that, as I said a moment ago, that council couldn't ask the mayor to.
Right.
Identify X number of people that the mayor would like on.
I, I think, I think X number of people should not be, uh, more than something.
Well, so many times, you'll see a specific number of charter review commission members that are specified in a charter, and if there's an allocation as between the executive and the legislative branches, that's usually spelled out. I mean, that's one way to put it to rest. And if that would help council move to impanel a CRC more quickly?
I mean, I'd like to see it happen quickly, but I'd also like to see it happen. I'd like the legislative body to be a legislative body on this particular.
And, and you would be, you would be the only ones who could vote, if five of you agreed, to send something to the voters and find out what they want to do with it. You could give the mayor one pick, you could give the mayor half less one, you, you know, you could do none. That's up to council and the voters.
And that was what my point was gonna be, is that I, we know how you feel about it, but twenty years from now, council might want to say, mayor, you pick all the picks, and we'll confirm.
I mean, I mean, that's true. I mean, I think that's bad government.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm actually, I'm drawing the line here, that's bad government to me.
So, I mean, I think, okay, so.
So they should change it in the charter if they feel that strongly about it.
So, I mean, it certainly seems like this was a pretty rocky road, uh, the last time.
It was a long road.
So.
Do you wish you were here?
So, um, this needs to put the issue to bed. You, you can't have anything that's wishy-washy, it needs to be clear, it probably needs to be probably a couple pages long and legalese, just to lay it all out.
No, 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 one, one will construct a paragraph.
I mean, I think the issue here is, if this is our authority, then it's our authority to pick those members. Uh, and if they, and, okay, so, but hopefully, you have a collaborative government, though, that's going on, and, you know, the council at that time would invite the mayor to, hey, who would you, I mean, I mean, I would think the meetings that happen on a, on a weekly basis between the council presidents and the mayor are such that, hey, do you know, I've got this list of these people, these are really good people, and, and everybody's working collaboratively together. But you know what? That's up for a future council and, and, and maybe the current mayor, a future mayor, a future council, would, 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 whatever it is. Just put it in here that says, this is, it's, it's up to, it's, it's set by, it's set by the council.
It's not quite that simple, but go ahead.
That's why you need pages and pages of legal documents.
But it, but it, well, but I, I'm not sure that you do, um, although you could do it. You caused me to start reflecting even more on those meetings and that process.
Could it twitch? I was not prepared for this today.
To some extent, um, it, it, it could, you know, raise a question of what does it mean to dominate? And also, is domination appropriate? Um, I think that's worth council thinking through. But if there's a, a thought to reflecting collaboration by providing the mayor some, some number of appointments to a commission, um, I think you'll find it easier to do that in a way that meets some of the other concerns, if you define how many people will be on the commission, which by the way, will also eliminate certain, uh, negotiations and controversies. Should we have, you know, five or seven or seventeen, some odd number, you know, in, in the future, if you say seven or nine, in this, in this charter provision, yeah.
I feel we had nine, yes.
So it's typically an odd number, but, you know, again, that wasn't specified in the legisla, in the charter. It was specified by the legislation that was later adopted. But again, that whole process was, was challenging for everyone concerned. So I would just encourage you to think about, what are you trying to accomplish? If there's a, if there's a desire to appro, to provide appointments to the mayor, the charter could allow that to occur directly. But it could be a part of a, uh, of a number of CRC members to be impaneled, which could reflect a larger number. You could have two-thirds council, one-third mayor, you could have all but one council, you could do whatever you choose to do. But I think there may be value, if you want to avoid what happened the last time, to inserting some specificity here and asking the voters to consider that.
So this charter review commission that has drafted this proposal, they sort of lived through it. And I don't want us to, um, depart from this based upon what happened a year ago. So that the charter should, you know, the, the, this charter provision should not be influenced, in my view, by what happened the last.
Could I just interject one thing at this point? I want to make it clear that what I said about the charter review commission happened before we made any appointments. It had nothing to do, I'm just saying, where I'm coming from, and not a thing to do with what happened. I'm, I'm, I said it right out of the gate, and this is clearly a legislative function. And I acknowledge that the mayor is one of eight legislators. I do acknowledge that, but that's it.
So, were you done? So in essence, you know, you, if I'm understanding you correctly, you would like the charter provision to preclude, uh, a majority of city council members from ever, um, having a conversation or dialogue with the mayor that said, look, we're, we're gonna appoint nine people to the committee. Do you have some folks that you would like us to consider?
No, that, this.
Because I, I don't recall that, did we?
This would not.
Gave the mayor the authority to nominate? Did we do that then by ordinance?
Yeah.
And ultimately, we appointed them. So you want to preclude a, a future city council from even allowing the mayor to have that kind of nominating power?
I don't want, what I don't want is the charter to allow, uh, for an endless number of mayoral appointments to a charter review commission. And right now, it's an endless number of nominations, and, uh, you know, I mean, endless meaning that if it's, if the number's nine, you know, a, yeah, I suppose a council could, you know, give the mayor the authority to nominate nine people. I think that's the wrong way to go. I think, I don't think we should give away legislative powers for legislative functions. It's the wrong thing to do for a number of reasons, that, and I've, I've said several of them already, and I don't, I don't want to be, you know, because we do listen to these cyclical arguments, I don't want to be doing that.
Yeah, so when I listen to this, I'm having, I'm having trouble without, I mean, I think we're still talking a bunch of theoretical stuff, we're not really talking about where the rubber hits the road. I mean, is there a proposal on the table that says nine members on the commission, four of the mayor picks, five of the council picks? Or is it, you know, you know, nine members of the commission, the mayor nominates X, the council picks from a certain number of the mayor's nominees and a certain number of council nominees?
I mean, that, that's what Dr. Hannah's suggesting.
No, that's not what this says. It's, it, it's up to, council makes the appointments and council determines, are we gonna have five, are we gonna have seven, nine, fifteen?
I guess then I'm asking then, Tony, but Mr. President, do you, do you, are you suggesting that we alter this in some particular way?
I'm saying if appointments means that the mayor could make nominations, an unlimited number, I mean, in the sense of, there's nothing, there's no numbers in here. If, if the word appointments means, uh, you know, that it, it's not including nominations, to me, nominations are like appointments. To me, nominations are like appointments and I'll tell you from from, okay, now I am talking about the the experience. I mean, then you're talking about if 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 you if you can, if you can. If you can sit through saying no on a nomination and listening for the explosion that happens afterwards. I I just, I think that's just a lousy.
Well, then, well, then you want to have counsel. Pick pick who's on the commission.
I I no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if it's a limit, if it's a limited equal number, if if there's eight legislators. If there's a way to just, you know.
Four and four? I have a serious question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think we need to spell it out.
That that was gonna be my question. What is is there a concern with with specifying it so that, because it's already happening? This discussion is a tiny little preview of what's gonna happen if you're not more specific. I said, I predict, I predict. And I think you can do that in a way that is not inconsistent with the recommendations of the charter review commission. It's just adding specificity to how you do it.
You you know, I know we're we're probably not talking about this council. You know, probably not. We're probably talking about a future council dealing with this. But the question again becomes what kind of government do we want to have? And I want legislators to do the legislative work. And it does include the mayor. It does include the mayor. So, yes, I do think we do. I agree with you. We should pick a number and.
I'd also say the mayor has some legislative authority.
And I'm saying for that reason, the mayor should be included.
But ultimately, the mayor doesn't vote on the resolutions that a council would need to adopt by a two thirds majority to send these to the voters. I think that's really the legislative function at the heart of charter amendments.
But the but the but the work that goes into this from the legislative ad. Should be. Determined to some degree by the people they appoint.
So Councilman Posh wasn't on council when that prior list was circulated. I don't know if and was, uh, Mr. Petrus wasn't on either, right? Would you like for me to recirculate that and you guys can take a look at that and come back and maybe pick this up?
Yeah, was. Were there other municipalities on that?
That was the point of the list. It was just charter provisions that said, here's how we do charter review.
I'd like to see. That's what I was gonna ask for.
And I don't think the commission may have some as well.
We had, um, our chart does show what was done by some of the jurisdictions. You know, we principally looked at four jurisdictions, so what my chart tells me is that. Charter review, Lakewood requires every ten years appointment of nine voters to a CRC, by by council, four by the mayor. May recommend amendments within six months by a two thirds vote. Shaker Heights has nothing in their charter. South Euclid says charter review every ten years, elected with a one year term.
Okay.
So the members are elected. And they are the president of council or ex officio members. And each amendment approved by a majority goes to voters amendment by amendment. And University Heights had nothing in their charter. But I'm sure there are many other examples, those just happened to be the ones I captured in the chart.
That that's my thought is to like helping you sort of like move through this is to maybe take a brief pause, get some additional information to review and then pick this up again.
Yeah, I I'm fine with that.
Do the liquid thing, whatever. Because that seems to take a lot of the guesswork and room for argument out of it. What? Lakewood?
Nine.
Four and five, total of nine electors.
Not nine mayor appointments.
No.
What? Someday, some council may want to do that.
Well, when you say the liquid thing, you mean just.
Like what Linda just.
Just put the numbers out there. It doesn't have to be those numbers, but just.
Yeah, I mean, that those numbers would work, would allow council to dominate and.
And we remain friends. Oh, it's I just, you know.
Had a shared pool of applicants, my man.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so. All right, so what that's fourteen, so we're gonna revisit.
I forgot all about.
I know, I did too.
Oh, you're kidding.
I blocked it out.
So we have fifteen and sixteen.
Message flashed. He was busy. He had to leave for a minute.
Oh, that he want to weigh in on this?
No, he had to leave in a minute. He had to leave.
All right. Laws continued in force, fifteen point one.
And I don't think there's anything substantive in that. Wording.
And then. Take your time and we'll do sixteen.
In all of fifteen.
And Mr. President, if I if I could.
Yeah.
Um, picking up on a point that that Linda made earlier. I don't, I don't believe I've seen any significant objections I have to most of the rewording that takes place, but. There is a point in time at which counsel may wish to consider the strategy question that she identified earlier, which is. If you have a lot of changes, does that impact how the public perceives what you're asking them to vote on? So it's just something to keep in mind as you move forward.
Yeah, it's an interesting dynamic because on the one hand. The twenty nineteen Charter Commission report. Recommended updating and cleaning up the language and we adopted a lot of. What they had flogged through and then we had additional edits that we made. With very great assistance from Lee to kind of make things consistent and make some flow. It is true that it ends up with a lot of changes on the page, but it's also true that as it currently sits. You know, the charter was written a long time ago in most parts and it's got a lot of kind of archaic formulations in it. So it it is just a judgment as to whether you want to include the cleanup changes or not.
Does that, what we would see, um, if this gets to the ballot is all the redlining or just that's what we want it to be?
So you have publicity requirements that address some of that, but you've got to have a complete redline copy available at the polling place. How many people look at that? And and you have to publish the amend- the amendments as well or mail them to every voter. And so that's that's the point where.
And it's confusing.
And it's hard to know, like, how will people react and lots of things could influence that, so I just.
You all know that although I'm assuming that in your work on council, you get documents in the.
Yeah.
But there's a large part of the population that has never seen a redline document.
Right.
And if they look at a redline document and their head.
It looks scary.
They they really don't understand what the hell to do with it. And I'm sympathetic to that because it's not part of what they deal with in their world.
You also get flashbacks to high school.
But we also have a pretty. Educated of base voters in Cleveland Heights and, you know, I think you do that. And, you know, hopefully there's gonna be a. A summary, a synopsis of these things that sort of just bullet by bullet, just just say, hey, look, this is. These are the big changes. We're going this to this, this to this.
Right, because there's something that says you can.
Try to provide that.
Right, there's something that says you can put additional information over it. You could be accountable.
Yeah.
You know, and that could all be updated to make it easier for the voters to understand.
Right.
However, it's additional homework for the voters and surprise, surprise, in my experience. People do come to the polling place and they don't know how they're gonna vote. They they haven't decided yet. They'd say, oh, I'm gonna wait till I get in there.
Well, I think charters are pretty esoteric. Documents, I mean. I don't know why anybody would think about this, you know, a normal. Well, just, I mean, just. It's it's just not.
In the quote, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I and I frankly, unfortunately, as a former government teacher. I don't, you know, I just in in just working on campaigns for forty years. I mean, it's not, no, people don't. It's not a real transferable kind of. As much as we'd like, I mean, I I think there are really intelligent people that don't know much about government. I that's that's been the case. That's been unfortunately the case. So i- i- I'm not diminishing. I don't think, I don't think, I think we should just do whatever we think is best. You know, no kidding, and and not worry so much about how much red ink is on there. Although I do agree that, you know, there's. There is something scary about it, just as is a visual.
Yeah, and I and I and I'm sorry for derailing this with that. I there there are a couple of provisions where there's some rewording that I'd like to revisit with the council and and I might want to talk with. Lee or Linda as well to make sure I'm understanding it where I think. You may not, I I may not want to recommend certain things. Most of this, though, looks fine and in many cases looks cleaner and more modern. It it is really just a question of if you're not. If it's not a substantive change that's important to make, it's worth thinking through when you get there, like maybe this August, you know. Do you want to put all these on? That's all. And the question on the ballot will be very short. It may be, shall the first or whatever, you know, amended charter of the city of Cleveland Heights be approved? So they won't, it's not gonna have all of this there, but but they will have seen it, most likely.
Well, it will be available for them to see.
Correct. Well, true.
And there's a three prong task that the Board of Elections looks at for the ballot language and will have obviously advice about that.
Well, and especially if it were worded the way I just said or. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. So we have, so fifteen, uh, no no substantive changes and sixteen is.
The effective date.
The effective date, which. Everybody agrees January first is probably the best way to go. I see now that it is two forty three and probably not. Worth getting into any kind of new stuff unless somebody's wants to make a motion to go into another bucket. Hearing no such.
No.
No, go ahead.
But we have six pages left on this. I mean, is it? Is this all pretty simple stuff, like very little changes?
Buckets three.
Buckets three and four, this is, this is on pages.
Well.
Of the packet, of the packet.
Two, three and four.
Yeah, it's more than that and the. The red line, I think.
The red line. That is is actually.
Well, three is pretty short.
Pretty sure, I mean, I think we should.
Oh, that is a red line. It's just out of color. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great.
It's ethics and training is number three.
Oh, yeah, wouldn't it be great if we can, if we can get, I think. It doesn't seem like that there's a lot here. I think we can get through it in fifteen minutes and then it's, and then we don't have to worry about it.
Well, I don't know about trying to fly through the rest of it, but the the ethics and training, I'm sorry, what what is that, uh, eight? Ten?
No, there's, um, yes, ten.
Yeah, that is the next. According to the budget, that's the budget, according to the agenda. It is the next item. Okay, so. So this is called general expectations?
That's section ten point one, yeah.
Well. Oh, I see. Article ten, ethics, got it, okay. Start of all these laws. So the last sentence in ten point. Or under general expectations is city officials have a responsibility to educate, monitor. And support all employees and city representatives in this mission.
So it.
Allows for an ordinance or a resolution to talk about council, new council training and so forth. Requirements. Or then I guess we have to read on here, but. Question is how specific do we want to get here?
While you're looking quickly, I would throw out that, um, looking at section ten point three. I appreciate the pointing to the state ethics law. Because. You know, in my experience, when when public bodies try to develop ethical standards that are different from, even if it's sort of just worded differently from the state laws. And there, and an enforcement question arises, it can sometimes be difficult to answer them or evaluate them as quickly with the state ethics laws. The Ohio Ethics Commission has a tremendous library of authority that it's developed over the years with opinions and. You can look to those and sort of pretty quickly inform yourself about, you know, how things should be handled.
That's why we used that. We started out with a more custom approach to it and that as we dug in deeper. It was pointed out to us that there was this wealth of information, that we had a pretty well developed set of laws in Ohio. And that it would be much more helpful and user friendly.
Yeah.
To refer to the state laws.
And and more enforceable, I think, ultimately.
So there's legislation before us about having. Special ethics. What what word am I looking for? There's ethics legislation that has been presented to council that. Has been used against members of this council and used against council that we don't have good ethics. And I do think that what what bothers me about this whole thing really comes down to the, I think, the goodness that I'm looking at in amendment three is like. It does point to the state standard, which, as you mentioned, Mr. Hannah, has just a wealth of information in it. And, you know, it's. It it's pretty complete. I like the idea, though, I mean, and we and we follow that, I mean, the. The the it was a large effort that for me to comply with with the legislation, just with the businesses and the things that I'm a part of. But you comply because you're a public official and you just do that. So I like the fact that it's echoed in here. I think I I also like the idea of the training. This kind of goes along with that. I think the ethics document or the ethics legislation. And I and I think putting this in the charter, I think, is gonna satisfy. The people that are trying to get that, trying to get council to approve that one piece of legislation. So I, you know, I think this is, I I think all this is very sufficient. I think it's smart. I like the training that's in involved in it. It's a lot stronger, obviously, than 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 what we have right now. I mean, the issue here is, you know, do we want to send it to our legal department to just give us some more advice on it?
I mean, I would, I think that if if unless you determine you don't want to move forward with this, you know, again, come whenever that is, you know, we would be looking at this in connection with. The the balance of the materials that you ask for, you know, additional feedback or writing up on. There is this section ten point four, which allows council to adopt additional rules and policies, but I think appropriately, it also points back to and says. That aren't duplicative of or in conflict with the general laws of Ohio. So that you preserve that sort of touchstone.
I have a question. Is how this is written currently. Provide for the ability to have. Designate, do the training for you, because I personally really hate that rule. I think that people should be doing their own trainings because it's really important, obviously.
I don't think that there's a reference to having a designate do it. There's a.
Have the designate, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
And I.
Like for the O M A, for the sunshine law training?
Yep.
So it says there's a certificate that needs to be signed by the person designated by council to verify the completion of the training.
Right.
As I've read this quickly, each member. Participates and attends the training personally. If and if there's doubt when you get to the end of this, just add it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the state law allows.
I I would say, I would say that if if council feels. That it's not appropriate for somebody to delegate that, you could have an ordinance that says. At least if you don't do the training yourself and you delegate it, you have to disclose it. And maybe that just act of disclosing it and being being required to justify it would shame people into doing it themselves.
Does that, um, when you get through certificate, would it say on there if it was a designate, it took the class instead of the person who's supposed to?
It might not say, I they actually don't do certificates anymore. It's just the record.
Okay.
And it does say on the record that it was a designate.
Can you satisfy ethics training requirements that way, though? That's, I mean, sunshine laws, you can't. By state law, it says, yeah, have someone go and you pretend you went.
I'm not sure about ethics, once.
I'm not sure that's the case. I also don't see that here. Right, I'm not missing a reference to a designate?
I think we put any reference to designate, although I was aware that that was a thing.
Yeah.
It kinda blows my mind.
For certain, yeah.
So if the state laws for a designee and we write.
You can't.
We can't, okay, we can't change the cost.
No, no, I mean.
I mean, that's what I would think.
I think you can, you could provide that you, um, that each member must.
Do their own.
And the mayor must attend personally.
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, okay, that, then, cause I thought maybe that would go against the state law that says you could send a designee.
I think if the state law said you must attend personally and we tried to change that.
Change it.
I say.
Maybe a conflict.
But, you, you know, there's obviously been a lot of noise. Council about this, would you feel right, training and the, and, and, and the sunshine laws. I almost think that either we need to legislate or maybe if you think it's important, I'll put a charter. About having an annual meeting, you know, probably in early in the year, just like you have, um, your, your annual organizational meeting. But it's a sunshine law training that everybody knows it's gonna be an hour meeting, you know, maybe you, you. Second week of, uh, before council meeting as a whole, uh, can you bring someone in and can you do a stock sunshine law training? And, you know, it's on every year, it's something everybody does and there's no question and nobody's gonna be pointing fingers at each other that. You don't know the sunshine laws because in fact we all do and we're. It might not be in the charter or there's an ordinance, but at least it's something that we do as, it, it's sort of built into our culture.
And would you envision that requiring council person participation personally? Not allowing a design, I mean, this would be at a, if it's at a council meeting, presumably you're talking about reaching the members directly.
So.
And also you're talking annual, not once per term, with, like the state, the state law standard.
No, I'm saying annually.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's better, I think it's just safer to do it annual because it's complicated, it, it gets used against council, which it has. I, um, if you don't show up, you don't show up and we can't force someone to be at a council meeting, but at least if it's on the schedule, if it's. I, I think we're just sort of elevating it at a certain level where we're telling the community, we understand it's important, we see that it's important. We're not worrying about a de, a, a designee doing it, uh, but it's always on our agenda and hopefully everybody. Comes to a meeting and, and participates in it. I mean, most of us who don't come to a meeting, we're gonna review the meeting that already happened that we weren't there for. But I just think it makes it important and, and I don't know, I guess this is where I'd like to have, uh, advice from. The legal department, I mean, are any of these kinds of things in other charters? Or is it just better to handle this and more of, um. Just, just regular, you know, simple legislation, just an ordinance or something?
I'm not sure that I've seen certainly OMA training specified in the charter, I think in large part, or may, perhaps in large part because state law reaches that. Um, and I haven't seen the ethics training provided for in a charter either, but we can quickly look to see if there's something out there.
Lakewood has.
They may know, yeah.
Lakewood has a pretty recent charter. You know, they revised their charter a few years ago, so they may be more sensitive to it than some of these other charters that haven't been touched in forever and a day.
And, and this, while you're, while you're looking, this requirement on the ethics training that's currently here, I was looking to see the frequency. And it provides the number of hours of instruction that are required, goes on to say though that, uh, council members who have previously served on council and a mayor who's previously held the office of mayor are exempt from the requirements. Uh, but can take the training, so, yeah.
And you could take that out if you want everybody to have the training, but there is a ethics and training provision in Lakewood charter and I think we based ours on theirs.
Correct.
So, I think that if we do a couple hours in February, you know, when, it doesn't have to be, I don't think we need a Saturday. And a couple hours in March, you know, like we said, we would meet once a month. And maybe a slightly longer meeting in April, because we're gonna have to, you know, kinda recap pretty much everything we've done. It looks to me like we'll, we'll get through this based on what's left, um, yes.
Respectfully.
Yes.
If I were you, I would frontload it. The, the, the longer meetings because it will take you longer than you think it's gonna take, in my experience, that's just a suggestion.
Um, so you think we, we should have another like Saturday meeting in, uh, February?
If I were you and you wanna get done by April.
A three-hour meeting, something like that?
I see, I see nods behind you.
Yeah, can we not do that?
So, just, I, I mean, this is not exactly a traditional question, but I thought all five hours were productive today.
I agree.
But I'm, am I alone here or?
No, I think this.
Tim Petrus?
I think, I think that it was, it's speaking for myself.
Yeah, um, although, you know, three hours, yeah, but.
Can I recommend, if we do another Saturday, that we do it on the twenty-second of February because that's a short week already compared to today, like it was this week? Make sense?
I could do that, twenty-second.
Cause then it's not.
We also don't have a council meeting.
Six. Right. Thank you for that, too.
That's a good idea.
Just put that out there.
I mean, you know, obviously, you know, I, I mean, that's good, those tw, uh, uh, tentatively, February twenty-second?
I checked my calendar, that works for me.
Okay, so tentatively.
And, uh, buckets, uh.
Two and four.
What do you wanna do, ten to, well, whatever it is, from when, how many, you wanna do three hours? Like, uh, or do you wanna do what we just did?
Do, are.
I think if we don't have to go over everything, everything we did today, because it's only been a month.
I think the only thing we need to do.
The twenty-second.
To go over is.
February, Saturday.
The next part.
Well, the, the thing we just talked about, the.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
That we didn't come to a conclusion to, and maybe anything Bill is gonna, uh.
Do you have an update or anything?
Yeah, like, maybe you might have an update for us on a couple of things. But I mean, other than that, we, no, we don't need to do what we just did again.
Are, are you sure? I mean, we've, we've tried to do these meetings with just like maybe two hours and it hasn't been enough, I mean, this was, I.
No, no, we're talking about doing a longer meeting.
Like a three year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just not.
I just meant that we don't need to, like today, we actually started from the beginning, we went over everything, we went over in October and before. I don't think we'll need to do that in February, I mean, that's up to all of us, by the way.
Well, okay.
And I'm not.
If, if we're, if we're gonna be doing, uh, uh, you know, bucket two and bucket four, okay, cause I think we've talked about bucket three, we've got questions. I mean. That's, that's fine, but if we're gonna be looking for answers for the things that, uh, the law department is gonna be looking at for us. That's, that's gonna be, we're, we're revisiting bucket one and we're revisiting bucket three and that.
Just parts of it, but yes.
I think those are the most controversial items.
So I would say two things, one is, um, we'll turn that stuff around as quickly as possible if, for whatever reason, we're not in a position to have that to you in advance of the twenty-second. I would think you would still meet and potentially move on into new things and then you circle back. And I'm also thinking about my scheduling and the twenty-second is just before I'll be out for a little while, so that could work fine. But it'll also be my last weekend before I'm out for a little while, so three or four hours sounds better to me than six.
Okay.
If that's possible, I do think today was productive.
Good, I'm glad, uh, so, uh, Andy would like to start at ten, any, any objections to that? How about ten to one?
That's nice.
Like, we'll just, you know what I mean, we'll take a, like a short break and then we could, we could go out to lunch and not talk about any of this stuff afterwards.
That was a no for everyone.
Alright, um, well, with that, at three oh two, this meeting is adjourned.